All right, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, August 24th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Laut?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is approval of minutes from the August 3rd special meeting.
I'll move approval of the minutes.
I will second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis, Mary Alice, all right. Are there any corrections? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is additions to the agenda, seeing none. I did want to announce that originally we had expected to have the report from the Hillard Heinz firm tonight. That was not able to be finished by this date, so it's now scheduled for September 8th. The report will be included in the city council packet. It'll be posted to the website at the same time the packet is, so the council and the public will have access to that report before the meeting on the 8th.
Diane, is that a special meeting? Because that's the Tuesday.
That's correct. Labor Day is Monday.
Oh, right, right.
It's the Tuesday after Labor Day.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, we'll move on to public input. There are no presentations then scheduled for tonight. So I'd like to ask for public input. I'm going to go to my list here. If there's anyone who wants to give public input first on the items of business that are listed on the agenda, so that would be the two emergency orders or the appointments that are listed there, does anyone wish to address those topics? Okay, Adam Rush?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, I'd like to speak about the emergency order and the way it was implemented, Order 20-09. To start, I do not understand why this was issued as an emergency order with no prior warning when it could have been issued as, you know, done as something ahead of time. In this order, you establish rules of conduct that must be followed regarding social distancing and face coverings. You define the rules as applying to all private homes in the campus area and all multifamily residences throughout the city of Urbana, and you gave all police officers of the state of Illinois jurisdiction to enforce this order. Look, the reason given for this order is because University of Illinois students are returning to the community, but this should come as no surprise to any of us. Since 1867, the plan has been that university students should come to our city every fall to pursue their education. I'm disappointed by the fact that this order is entirely a stick to compel behavior with no carrots to encourage adoption. I'm insulted that this rule is only being applied to the campus area. Because I live close to campus, I am now by law subject to a four-person limit on gatherings without interference by the city. If, for example, my parents came to visit me, my wife, and our two children, we suddenly have a party of six, which means that a police officer now has the right to come into my backyard, demand that we either produce documentation that proves we all are related, or we have to follow the order. That is the way this emergency order is written. Now, obviously, the scenario I just described to you is ludicrous. My house is owner-occupied by a single family. We are the quote "good people" in the western Urbana neighborhood. The police are not going to harass us, and even if we did want to have a party of 15 to 49 people, I'm privileged enough to have several friends outside the city limits who are willing to host us on their property. But that's exactly the problem with this emergency order. It does not treat people the same. It was written to be a stick to beat on the students in the places where they live in case they are doing things that the city government deems not good for the community. We all know that COVID-19 is a serious virus and that it is particularly dangerous for our elders, immunocompromised, and other people with certain conditions. As a society, we need everyone to do their part to slow the spread and protect the vulnerable. But I'm going to tell you right now that using the stick is not the answer. We need people to voluntarily adopt good practices. The college students in our community already know the risks that come from the novel coronavirus. They know that it can make them sick. They know they can infect a friend or loved one if they are asymptomatic carriers of the virus. And if that's not enough to make them consider their actions, they know that they will lose the privilege of accessing the University of Illinois campus if they become infected, even if they don't have any other bad symptoms. They're being tested twice a week, so it's not like they're going to hide it. They're being asked to live up to a certain standard, and I believe they will do so. According to data released by the Illinois Shield Testing Program during Illinois move-in days, our COVID test positivity rate for the entire campus community is only 0.74%. Everyone has been tested, and everyone who's infected has been warned so that they can quarantine, arguing that we need this special order because the student population is a threat, is discriminatory, and ignores the precautions that students are taking. Yet there's another population that would be affected by this order, as it extends to all multifamily residences throughout the city. This order applies to the poor, the renters, individuals of lower socioeconomic status. As a society, we are trying to deal with conflict between lower-income communities and the police, but this city council has just given an order that the police should scrutinize people who live in apartment buildings rather than single-family homes. The city council's been working to regain the trust of all its residents. We should do that instead. This order provides fines of $750, more than a month's rent for many. This is a civil rights issue. I think the order is ill-advised in the way it seeks to punish noncompliance rather than promote voluntary action, but if the city council believes that such an order is really necessary to safeguard the health of our community, then you need to extend the order to cover the entire city instead of just the campus area and apartment buildings. For all the fear that the college students who stayed on campus last spring would spread the virus, we have probably had more high school students cause outbreaks at unofficial proms and graduation parties that were hosted by their parents. Don't give a special pass to single-family homeowners while you unfairly scrutinize renters and people who live in apartment buildings. Thank you for considering my concerns. I hope that you will do the right thing and treat everyone in Urbana equally under the law.
Thank you. Christopher Hansen?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hi, my name's Christopher Hansen. I'm an Urbana resident. I'm going to comment on the ordinances tonight, but first I want to say how disappointed I was that there appears to have been no public outreach or notice of any kind that the Hillard Heinz report was delayed by two weeks. Mayor Marlin announced that it would be happening today. People are probably certainly showing up to this meeting expecting to see that report, and the mayor, nor the council, nor the city staff have made any effort to inform the public that that was going to be delayed. As far as I see it, this report was probably, is probably the most anticipated report that will come out of the city this year, so I don't know why there's no effort to inform people. But anyways, onto the ordinances that you're looking at tonight. I agree entirely with Mr. Rush who just spoke before me. These are heavy-handed executive orders that Marlin put out by herself. I have no idea why these were issued as executive orders without discussion or input by the council or by the public. I don't see that there was community outreach on this, and this kind of feels like the curfew that Mayor Marlin put out a couple months ago where this curfew was kind of just pushed out by emergency order, and almost no one in Urbana actually realized there was a curfew. The curfew went out, and then, you know, within, you know, a moment of it being released, it was in effect, and no one knew about it. So you've done the same thing here, and, I mean, I'm aware of it because I pay attention to these things, but what have you done to actually make sure that everyone is aware of these orders and these huge fines? The first order, what is it, 042, that seems to pretty much mirror rules that are, you know, essential already in place for businesses, restaurants, and bars. I can't get, I can't understand this issue of security cameras where you're saying that any kind of enforcement officer has immediate and absolute access to a private business's security data and their footage. I don't think that's legal. I'd like to hear you discuss the legality of that, and also realize that when a business is trying to operate and they have a minimum number of staff, if you have a police officer going in there trying to take up their time and look at security camera footage, you're really disrupting their business. So you shouldn't be doing that at all. You should be asking permission. Maybe they can go back and meet with them later if necessary. And it also isn't clear to me what the fine structure is for these businesses. It's mentioned, you know, in the ordinance, the maximum fine, but I can't find anything that indicates a maximum financing code. I've seen something, you know, regarding the area of $300 for, you know, various liquor violations, but you should make that clear. The next ordinance, the second one, 043, is really, really bad because it makes it illegal to gather privately even in ways that would otherwise be allowed at businesses. So you're restricting, from my understanding, you're restricting private gatherings on private property even worse or even more restrictive way than what you would allow at businesses, such that if someone set up, say, two picnic tables in their backyard, they might end up being in violation, and then the fine is more than double, $750. We're in a discussion where we have a big issue with police and how police interact with the public and what that needs to look like. We all seem to recognize that what it looks like now is wrong in these heavy-handed ordinances with police reason and power to harass almost anyone they want and demand papers and issue fines, and it looks like you've built in this rebuttal presumption, which I think means, you know, guilty until proven innocent, and it's all wrong. You shouldn't pass this at all. I don't even think you should try to modify it. Just vote no to $750 in fine. This is just heavy-handed posturing, and I don't see that it's going to do any good. And again, where is your community outreach? How are you going to make sure that everyone actually knows about this before you start slapping fines on them? How is that going to happen? When you pass a law like this, you need to make a big effort to inform the community, and I don't see that that has happened, and I don't see how that will happen. So I think you should just completely vote no to the second ordinance. It attacks certain groups of people. It definitely affects poorer people much, much worse than people who have wealth and who can, you know, make a wealthy person's type of arrangements to, you know, hold their gatherings in a way that are out of sight and out of criticism by the police. So I think you should just get rid of this. It's no good, and don't pass ordinances like this, emergency orders like this in the future. Have it go before council as a discussion item first. There's no reason to pass this as an emergency order. Thank you.
Next up, does anyone wish to, let's see, Casey? Could you please unmute Casey?
Hi, sorry. I must have heard something by accident. I was just listening. I didn't mean to comment.
Okay, thank you. Billy Kenniston?
Hello, am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I'm going to offer basically the total counter of the last gentleman's comments. I think I'm very much in support of the emergency order. I was very relieved. I was very relieved when I got the mass email from the University of Illinois letting us know that this emergency order was put into place. I am a homeowner and a graduate student at the University of Illinois, and I'm very, very concerned about what will happen if there is an outbreak in our community. So, okay, let me try to compose all my thoughts that I wanted to share. I've been thinking about this a lot. One, we had already over the weekend a gathering at our neighbor's house of about 50 people, a large group of undergraduate students drinking. I tried to warn them. They claimed that they would disperse the party. I saw more than a dozen people leaving, and still it was clear that there was a very large gathering going on. I called the police on them. The police, far from what the last gentleman has said, he doesn't know what he's talking about. He's just being afraid. The police are actually unwilling to give a fine. They refuse to give a fine. They refuse to enter the building. They came and they stood on the porch, and these 18-year-olds said that they didn't have a large gathering going on, and the police believed them. It's galling. There's no way to enforce a policy around forbidding large social gatherings, which is necessary to stop the spread of COVID-19, without some mechanism for allowing the police to either tell everyone who's inside, you have to all come outside now, and if there's less than 10 of you, you can keep going, or if there's more than 10 of you, it's over and you get a $750 fine. I very much wish my neighbors had been fined. Okay, so that's one very basic thing I really wanted to raise, that I think the police are not taking it seriously, are not treating it like an emergency order. This is not about personal freedom, rights. This is about public health. This is about a widespread, highly contagious disease that kills people. The amount of people who have died in the United States is more than Urbana and Champaign combined. Every single one of us would be dead if all the deaths were in our community. It's not a small issue, what's going on now, and we've been very, very lucky in the last five months to not have our hospitals crowded, to not have the ICUs totally full, and frankly, to not have a lot of death, and then not have a lot of restrictions on our lives. But now we have 40,000 new young people. So I think the measures should be there, and they should be definitely enforced and be stronger. Other thing I wanted to raise is that the University of Illinois currently has a policy in place to tell people who test positive to go home. That is dangerous, irresponsible, and reckless, and I think the city of Urbana, I'm insulted that I have to try to explain this to the University of Illinois because it's basic mathematics, that people of undergraduate age die at a very, very low rate from the coronavirus. They're not entirely immune from it, but they die a lot less than the parents and community members that would be exposed if we send these COVID-19-positive young people so-called "home." So I want the city of Urbana to put pressure on the University of Illinois to manage all quarantine facilities on their own, on campus, and provide proper infrastructure to make sure that we don't have... They are expecting hundreds of new positive cases on a regular basis once the semester opens up. So, yeah, so that's very scary to me if they're just told, "Go home," and especially because a lot of them are our neighbors and our community. And the last thing is I want to just raise, I am running out of time, that we should begin thinking now for the possibility that the university goes into entirely online. Entirely online is not a panacea for safety for COVID-19 unless there's an infrastructure to keep those young people getting tested and to really have the quarantining in place. Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you. Lena Walker?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I also had a comment on the ordinance. I am currently a resident of Urbana as of a few weeks ago, and when I read the ordinance, I was initially fairly confused by some of the language in it, and specifically, there was an area that I had a concern regarding the designation of what constitutes private property when it comes to the enforcement of gatherings. I believe it's no more than 10 people. As I understood it when I read the order, private property was explicitly referring to multifamily residential units, and it seemed to me that there was a distinction being made between multifamily residential structures and single-family residential structures, which I found very troubling, and the best of my reason as I understood that language was that multifamily residential housing was essentially being used as a proxy for students, and I'm not opposed to safety measures to try to protect the community. I'm not opposed to discouraging large gatherings, that that is a good idea. However, if that is so, that it applies specifically to multifamily housing and not single-family housing, to me, that's a pretty serious equity issue, and, you know, there's a lot of people in our community who are not students, who may just happen to apartments, and potentially having them be more open to fines and policing posed with a residential home seems fundamentally wrong to me, and so it's entirely possible that I have misunderstood this, but that was the impression that I got from the ordinance, and I'm very concerned about that, and wanted to voice those concerns to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Axelrad?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So on August 7th, the governor's office sent out a press release. The press release pertained to businesses, schools, and childcare establishments establishing a three-strike rule process. First, a business in violation of health guidelines will be given a warning of written notice and encouraged to voluntarily comply with health guidance. Second, businesses that do not comply voluntarily will be given an order to have some or all of their patrons leave the premises as needed to comply with public health guidance and reduce risk. Third, if the business continues to refuse to comply, the business can receive a Class A misdemeanor and be subject to a fine ranging from $75 to $2,500. And again, they're using the language of business there, but they state quite clearly that this applies to businesses, schools, and childcare facilities. So when we're talking about these ordinances and what they do and don't cover, it seems like the University of Illinois is already covered as a whole. So with this measure with multifamily properties seems to be targeting plausibly off-campus university housing. I would like to remind people that there was a mass gathering this past weekend of people who, several were not wearing their masks. We have video of this. And as written, unless if I'm mistaken, these ordinances would not apply to them. And just because they were in support of a police in this particular example does not mean that they should be immune from scrutiny when it comes to emergency ordinances, especially when they're coming from out of town in order to risk our public safety. Thank you.
Megan McDonald?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name's Megan McDonald. I'm from Ward 5. I wasn't planning on speaking about this ordinance, but what Chris Hansen said really resonated with me, and then the guy after him said that Chris didn't know what he was talking about, and I'd just like to rebut that and say that Chris definitely had great points about who does this ordinance actually affect, and it does tie into the whole conversation of what the community has been trying to give input on and about how we do not want more police in our community, and I can't imagine why those cops didn't go in to that neighboring house. I mean, I could guess that it's probably a bunch of white, young people. That's probably why they didn't go in. I think about a few weeks ago, outside Soma, where there was a larger gathering of predominantly black people, and the cops had, you know, did not hesitate to come up with at least three, four, five police cars trying to break it up. My brother is a student at Missouri State College, and he just recently tested positive for COVID. He lives in a frat house. Multiple people have lived, you know, live in that frat house, and I'm just thinking about how, you know, I'm not angry at him, you know, you can't be upset at these individual students. We have to be angry at the systems that allowed this to happen in the first place, and I think that you all are partly culpable for that. Like, you all, you know, where were the discussions and where was the planning for all this? You know, we knew the students were coming back. We knew the university was going to risk the community's health by just trying to rack in tuition dollars by getting the students back here, and then to send them back after Thanksgiving. So I don't, it's a really messy plan, and you all and the university have had months to figure out, you know, that quarantining situation, what the other guy was talking about, like, if people, you know, get tested positive for COVID, they're just going to be sent home? Like, we have the resources and the money and the infrastructure to set up better quarantining places, and we also have the money and the resources to have made, like, online learning more seamless so that none of this had to happen in the first place, but now it has. And now what we're going to do is try to police the community and try to charge $750 if people have more than four people over, and the people that are going to be most affected by this are, like Chris said, low-income people, people living in multifamily housing, a bunch of kids living in a frat house or in a college house. Like, you give a $750 fine, they're all just going to chip in $10. Like, it's not, it's really no sweat off their shoulder, and I don't know. I just want to say that you shouldn't pass this either. You should really think about the impacts of it and who it's going to impact, and, yeah, just figure out a better... It's too late, basically. Like, what you guys should have done was systemic preparation, systemic education, and, yeah, now it's too late. You guys should have given better input to the university in saying that we didn't want this, but, you know, you were thinking about your economy and not about the public safety of the community. So I just want to say that, like, it's a little too late, and policing people and just trying to enforce more law enforcement on a community that already doesn't trust, doesn't already trust the law enforcement, it's like, it's kind of comparable to gun violence. Like, more policing isn't going to stop it. You know? It's a public safety issue, but more policing isn't going to solve it, and I would just think on that, and I can wrap up for today. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, that was it for people who've raised their hands. We did receive emails from Catherine Majewski, Carol Enske, Sophie Mine. Adam Rush also sent an email, Amina Payne, Brooke Armstrong, and John Hayes and Nate Wall, and those, the texts of those emails will be entered into the record. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. There is none. No reports of standing committees, special committees, or officers. Any reports?
Yeah, I just have a quick note because I know that this was, this is a topic that the council has shown a great interest in, and that is the status of the Union Gardens project, and we recently found out that the developer, Trinitas, is not going to pursue that project. The uncertainty that was associated with that model of student housing coupled with the pandemic, I think was the reasoning behind that. So there was a, if you recall, there was a land transaction pending, and so the property is still owned by the trust that it was, because it was under contract to Trinitas. So just wanted to bring you all up to speed on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Diane, I think that there were people who were waiting to just generally comment because three hands went up right after you finished because we had asked for comments on those specific items.
I'm sorry, I see that now. Okay, Tracy Chung?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chung from Urbana. I just wanted to say that last week's public input by Benjamin Stone is particularly chilling, and it accurately describes the problem with policing and Urbana police officers. Seeing the police treatment of the initial juvenile suspect where UPD chief Sarah Finn says, "This is how we want things to happen," versus their brutality against Ms. Lewis, the message was clear. It's a chilling threat from the Urbana Police Department to residents that if residents comply with whatever the police command, they will only be mildly abused. But if anyone dares question, speak up, or not comply, they will face the full force of police brutality. Unfortunately, this is Unfortunately, this is not a new sentiment among Urbana Police Department officers. In 2018, ex-Urbana police officer and community relations specialist James Preston created a racist video that showed two scenarios. One in which the young man in a traffic stop faced consequences. And this was just because they were considered being not polite to the officer. Preston's work was applauded by city council. Mayor Marlin praised it as a great community service. And city council member Dennis Roberts even commented that if people knew how to be civil, if they knew the right words to say, they could avoid the terrible consequences to the police. I think this is a very dangerous way of thinking. Secondly, Mayor Marlin, why wasn't the cancellation of the Hillary Heinz presentation of the April 10 incident review announced to the public before tonight's meeting? Don't you guys even have the decency to give a heads up to the public who have been awaiting the findings of this review? How long have you known about the cancellation of the presentation? Why are you and city staff allowing Hillary Heinz to miss the deadline? This is a company that Urbana is spending over $20,000 of our money on a review that was decided upon in secrecy. I'm sorry, but people just don't miss deadlines and keep quiet about it. I think council members should really look into this issue. Another week has gone by, and I have still not received any response to my request for a fee waiver for my FOIA request on Urbana Police Department public records. It has been more than a month since I emailed Assistant City Clerk Elizabeth K. Mihari about the fee waiver solution that was touted by Urbana City Attorney James Simon. Curiously, I did receive a response from Elizabeth K. Mihari for another recurrent request and notice in response to another CPR FOIA request. So I know that she is responding to emails, but just very selectively. I guess James Simon's words on the fee waiver are just lies, I guess, to placate or rather deceive residents. It blows my mind that you guys, city council members, are still making excuses and covering up for the lies, corruption, and misconduct by city staff. City Attorney James Simon, Urbana Police Chief Seraphin, Mayor Marlin have all been caught and documented lying to the public. Instead of holding them accountable, you're all complicit in the lies. The next time someone gets beaten, shot, and God forbid, killed, the same cycle will repeat itself. The public outcry, the meaningless talking, the few good words uttered by city council members, presentations to explain away the wrongdoings, committees formed and then dissolved when the public spotlight is over, just like how Mayor Marlin dissolved the Community Alternative Policy Advisory Committee and Mayor's Neighborhood Safety Task Force. The next time someone gets beaten, shot, and God forbid, killed, blood is on your hands. It is time to check aside your egos and admit to all the missteps along the way, especially regarding the handling of the April 10 incident, and apologize. Apologize to the public, apologize and make amends to Aleah Lewis and all the other residents who have suffered at the hands of police misconduct. Until you're willing to acknowledge the missteps and take responsibility for it, the trust will not be restored.
Okay, thanks for listening. Austin Hoffman.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Austin Hoffman, and I'm an Urbana resident in Ward 5. I know you've probably heard about the police shooting of Jacob Blake. If not, I'll bring it to your attention. He was a, he is a 29-year-old black man from Kenosha, Wisconsin. He was unarmed yesterday when he was shot seven times in the back in front of his children by police as he was trying to quell a dispute between his neighbors. And I'm really speaking today from a place of deep despair and rage because this keeps happening. And the majority of you on this council are still sidestepping issues of police violence or complicit with it in many cases. You know, as we've been saying for months now, you all seem to think that these horrific acts of racist violence, of abuse, brutality, murder, of public executions only happen elsewhere and that Urbana is somehow immune to them. Kenosha is a city of 100,000, less than half the size of the Champaign-Urbana metro area, and its black population is even less proportionally than here in Urbana. So if it can happen there, it can happen here. And indeed, if you look at the history of the police departments in our communities, it shows that it already has happened here many times. It's not, it's not a matter of if, but, but when. And this is why we are so enraged by what happened to Aleah Lewis and the mass arrest of the 27 protesters at Marketplace Mall on, on May 31st. Because she was so very close to becoming the next Jacob Blake, the next George Floyd, the next Tatiana Jefferson, Sandra Bland, or Breonna Taylor. And it's clear that most of you just don't get that or that you just don't care. You think it's some sort of terrible aberration when it's actually too normal, too regular, too woven into the fabric of American life to be an aberration at all. It's what police do. It's what they've always done. And I don't know how many times, you know, you have to see video evidence of that before you stop saying it's just a few bad apples. Additionally, I would like to honor the memory of Treyford Pellerin, a 31-year-old black man who was killed by Lafayette, Louisiana police this past Saturday, and according to his mother, suffered from mental illness and severe social anxiety, which he was seeking treatment for. But God knows, you can't get that in this country unless you're rich. So I share these stories with you, and I'll continue to share them with you. Last week, if you recall, I shared with you that since 2014, there have been about 5,500 people killed by police in this country. And I know, you know, some of you are, I hope you're moving past this idea, but of course, we ask like, well, what did they do, right? Like, were they armed? And many of them aren't armed, of course. You know, did they steal something? Did they, you know, did they not comply with police orders? And you know that the vast majority of these things, they don't pose threats to officers. And many of them do exactly what the officers say, like Elijah McLean, who was killed by Aurora Police in Denver. You know, they do exactly what police tell them, and they still get killed. They still get killed. So it's not a matter of being respectful or obeying what the police say. If you're black, if you're a person of color, if you're indigenous, if you're queer or a trans person in this country, the police can kill you. And it, and it just, it just doesn't, it just doesn't matter. So I, I'm going to continue sharing these things with you each week until you realize that if you don't do something, that it's only a matter of time before more blood is on your hands. It's, it's really only a matter of time. And none of these deaths were necessary. They were all preventable. No one deserves to die for talking back to the police, for walking into Walmart with a toy gun. No one deserves to die from the police for stealing something even. It's not about, you know, being respectful or being a quote-unquote, you know, criminal, which is a constructed category itself. So all the property, all the buildings that are being burned in Kenosha this past weekend, and none of it's worth the life, the lives of these people. And you just don't, you just don't get that. And I'm very, very sorry for you, and I pity you.
Julie Watkins.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Julie Watkins, and I am an Urbana resident. I want to thank the commenter last week who was emotional. She spoke almost at the end last week. I think more, more of us should be heartbroken about we, what we see, hear, and are told about how police are hurting members of our community. It's hard not to be angry when police have tantrums, when somebody asks an allowable request, such as for a female officer to make a pat down. We need to be heartbroken because this shouldn't be what our community is about, that it's expected and tolerated that for the police chief and elected officials, for them and you to tell us how to behave rather than us telling our police officers. We expect them to reflect our values and not to view abuse and to not lose their tempers. It's outrageous that we are expected to tolerate such outrageous behavior. The city of Urbana shouldn't be cooperating and making excuses and letting young people's lives be threatened with felony convictions and going through all the expense of trials and maybe incarceration because state's attorney Julia Wright is continuing charges that are out of proportion. Please do all you can that the charges against Aleah Lewis and the 27 protesters are dropped. Thank you for considering this, and thanks again to everyone who keeps making public comment week after week.
Okay. Tony Temple.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name's Tony Temple. I am a Urbana resident. I'm originally from Detroit, Michigan, been here for about five years. I used to believe that this was one of the more progressive communities in this country. And in light of recent events, I have found that to be incredibly false. The things that happen here are a microchasm of what happens across the country. And what I do know from my experiences of being a person of color is that when you enter public spaces, the first thing that you have to be cognizant of is your color. You have to make sure that you are making yourself in every single possible way to not be a threat. Now, if you are not a person of color, you probably wouldn't understand just how stressful, how time-consuming, how energy-consuming that may be when you have to always constantly be aware of your color because of the danger that it presents perceived, you know, through propaganda. And that propaganda seeps into how police react to people of color. And statistics here, statistics across the country also reflect this. Police need to be held accountable. They need to be trained better to deal with the public at large, especially for people of color. My question, and which is not something that you have to answer now, but how are we supposed to trust an organization that was funded, that was founded, excuse me, in slave patrols? Like, that's one of the origin points of the modern police today, and they still behave in the same manner. There's no vetting of psychological issues, or there's no vetting of any white supremacist ties or any kind of link or, or anything concerning whether or not if they are part of any kind of racist ideology. That is dangerous, as well as these being the people who are outside of the neighborhoods that they work in. More so than that, I find myself kind of at a loss when I just found out that there is a, an actual public, you know, what do they call it, use of force board in which seats no people of color despite the fact that people of color make up for about half of the arrests in this county. If we are supposed to be a diverse, progressive community, then why isn't that not represented within the, the local government? We have to do better. If we're not committed to that, how can we say that we're committed to being, to being better, to being better neighbors? If we want to be all, you know, one in sing kumbaya and all that stuff, we got to put the work in. And I am particularly uncomfortable with anybody holding any kind of public office who does not have equality and equity at the very center of the, the policies and laws that they are pushing to uphold. I want this to be a better community, and I'm hoping that everyone else is willing to put in the work. Because I sure as hell am. I mean, excuse me for the French right there. But thank you for the time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jess Gonzalez-Cruz.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Esposito, and I live in Ward 7. I would like to voice my support for extending the eviction moratorium. And this is because the COVID crisis isn't over and people still can't afford their rent and really need to be able to stay in their homes, not just for their own safety, but the safety of the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane, just a point of order. I know that there are people on here who wanted to make general comments besides specific ones. They'll be allowed to speak twice, correct?
No, no, it's a five minutes total per person.
Well, I thought we were doing people speaking on ordinances specifically and then general comments that were...
No, I asked, no, I asked for, I wanted, if people had comments on the ordinance, I wanted to get those in first and then move on to other comments. So the people who spoke on the emergency orders have already spoken. If, if they want to send in written comments, we'd be happy to enter them into the record.
Okay.
I think, who's left here? I see Stuart Levy.
My name is Karen Medina, and I am appalled that you just changed the rules during a meeting. I am appalled that you just, my name is Karen Medina, and I am appalled that you changed the rules during a meeting. That is, and you interrupt people like the times that you have done Megan? I am just appalled. You are not a leader. You are a liar and a slime, this pro-business Republican, even though you call yourself a Democrat, you even lie about that. I cannot believe you are changing the rules in the middle of a meeting. I'm done.
The rules have always been five minutes speaking per person. And that's been as, when there are less than 20 people speaking, and that's been the council rules from, for as long as I can remember.
Alan only spoke for about a minute and 30 seconds, and Megan had about a minute left of her five minutes. So Alan should have three minutes and 30 seconds, and Megan should have about a minute if that's what we're going by.
All right, Alan.
Thank you. So I'm actually going to focus the remainder of my time on the discussion on the agenda item that goes to the eviction moratorium and the utility assistance. I want to convey the sense of scale that we are facing first and foremost, so that we don't delude ourselves into thinking that the existing assistance is enough. We have Ameren, Illinois offered $500 of utility assistance to the first 16,000 households. That's $8 million in total. That is woefully inadequate for even covering someone's utility debt. The low-income home energy assistance program offered just over $900 to a single-person household that even if they got the $500 in tandem, is supposed to last them through the lockup season in May. That will not last through May. That will barely cover the... That will not last through May, that will barely cover the utility debt for families. There are over 500,000 households at risk of eviction by the Illinois Housing Development Authority. That's almost double the number of housing units that they have helped finance, not even assist, finance over the last, over their entire 53 year plus existence. The same housing authority is offering $5,000 in assistance until August 28th to the first 30,000 households. They know that it's inadequate and they're doing what they can, but we need our municipal government to step up concretely and offer more. On top of that, there's a pernicious aspect that I want to address when it comes to, for safety and second laundering of measurements of poverty. So the first one on safety, we, since entering in phase four, have measured the number of counties in a warning status when it comes to COVID. These are counties that are in the process of having their own second spikes. There were four counties that had their spikes in July, or four counties in a warning status in July 24th, 11 counties in a warning status July 31st, 13 counties in a warning status August 7th, 14 counties in a warning status on August 14th. Now it's 20 counties. As of August 21st, 20 counties, nearly 20% of the state is back at a warning status. Our seven day average measure of the number of COVID cases was as of the time of my comment last Wednesday to the Illinois Commerce Commission, 70% of the peak seven day average for the daily number of cases. So when we're looking at the fact that this is a very profound and urgent issue, we need to do everything we can to ensure safe and sustained housing through the duration of the pandemic. Now let me talk to you about why the laundering issue is concerning. The only way that eviction is counted as an eviction is if it goes through the court process. That is the only way it happens. So if you make someone's housing unlivable and they are forced to leave, that is not an eviction. So what this can do, if it not properly addressed, is it will make it so that we'll have the realtor lobby doing what they do best, going, hey, look, not a lot of evictions happen during the pandemic, aren't we doing such a great job? Let's not lift the ban on rent control or do any of those crazy things. When in reality, a lot of people will have lost their housing and we do need to lift the ban on rent control because the living wage in Urbana and Champaign is both over $15 an hour already as calculated by the low income housing coalition. Please do your job. You have the legal staff's opinion that stated that you have the power to effect serious change here. Thank you.
Okay, Austin has spoken, Megan spoke, Rita?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Rita Connelly, I live in Champaign, Urbana. Police are reactive. They don't prevent crimes, but rather respond to them after the fact. The community has spoken countless the times over numerous of weeks demanding to defund the police. Urbana has taken a step in that direction by deferring the purchase of a K-9 vehicle and cutting budgets by 2%. And we understand the defunding to, to a degree, but what we desire will not occur overnight. It doesn't mean we can't start making adequate strides in the right direction. Seriously listening to the community's call to defund the police also means changing the way calls are responded to. This also includes Aliyah Lewis. Charges against Ms. Lewis must be dropped and the officers who brutalized her should be taken off duty pending a complete investigation independent. Furthermore, there must be clear communication and transparency between the council and the community about who is being tasked with this investigation and what the results are. Diane Marlin is disrespectful and disregarding of the public input. And at several recent meetings has demonstrated how little regard to this council she seems to have for our community input. I personally witnessed Marlin's partake in side conversations with someone in the chambers while public commentators were speaking. We can't even trust the city council to follow proper protocol, to hear public comments. And you expect us to trust the police with deadly force? It is clear that the policing organization is one, not aware of their implicit biases and/or okay with being dysfunctional and dysfunctionally programmed to continue the violence and the unjust treatment towards black and brown people because we are still seeing so much violence committed specifically against us by the law enforcement. Look at Jacob Blake. Why? You know why? Because of the law, they're shielded from accountability. It's no secret, the foundation of this America was built on the backs of slaves with the white supremacist ideologies that continue to thrive because thoughts of, because the thoughts of changes makes you, white America, uncomfortable. It has shown, these ideologies that contribute to your unwillingness allows a way, allow, continues to prevent a way for liberty and justice for all people of color, the pursuit of happiness for black indigenous people of color at the risk of your personal comfort and an end to systematic racism and oppression against black people. I urge the city council to listen to the voices of the people. You too are people and now is the time for change. We can't continue to live in a society in that which supports police harassment, intimidation, brutalizing of black and brown women specifically and other people of color with impunity. Black lives matter, black women lives matter, black men lives matter, black children lives matter, black students matter. That's why we need the RSOs out and those money, those monies to go elsewhere. Black trans lives matter and all black lives matter. It's not enough to continue to promise to, to do better. Address the violence that has already occurred and take actual steps to ensure that it does not continue. Thank you.
Austin McCoy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is actually Brandy Vale and I am an Urbana resident. I'm commenting today to call on the Urbana Council to do away with harmful police activities. Instead of policing homelessness, intoxication, addiction, et cetera, we should be focusing our attention on restorative solutions to these problems. Providing easily accessible social services to work at the root causes of these issues and others will do more to lessen their impacts on our society than finding and jailing, which are well known to exacerbate the problems. We need easier access to addiction counselors in Urbana. We need easier access to crisis counselors in Urbana. We need more resource connection and referral programs in Urbana. We need more affordable housing in Urbana. These social services and all others have been less prioritized in the city of Urbana than the Urbana Police Department. This is unacceptable. I'm here to demand you actively work to give the people of Urbana what we need. Not only do we need to better fund these services, we need to do so independently from the police. The one door strategy lends to the ability of a racist system to extend coverage of their discrimination over the services our minority communities are already sorely lacking in Urbana. Defund the police and support those in need instead of villainizing them. Thank you.
Amina Payne.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. My name is Amina Payne and I am once again calling you to do something with the data that was presented a couple of weeks ago by Chief Seraphin, which showed that 82% of juvenile arrests in 2019 were of black children. Again, when we see data like this, we need leadership and measurable actions. Tonight's meeting has one agenda item, so why isn't this issue being addressed if it's so important to the council? The other week, Sharice asked a couple of questions. What neighborhoods do these kids live in? I have similar questions and many more, so I really implore you to make this a priority. The police should be making this a priority. The crime analysis, which is the entire job of a crime analysis, is to analyze such data, should be making this a priority. Why is it not a priority? Furthermore, did you know that one of the police involved in the assault of Aliyah Lewis used to be a school resource officer at Urbana? So you, you know, we lessen violence by creating happy, healthy communities that aren't fighting for and struggling to have equitable access to resources and that includes equitable education. There's also talk and initial movement on a citywide racism resolution. What happened to that? What's becoming really apparent to me and seeing these meetings, how they operate, some of the barriers by the, you know, the, the Open Meetings Act, is that there's a lack of communication with the council. There also appears to be some ego that's, that's at hand and it's really impeding any movement on social justice. So I would also implore all of you to reflect and just get rid of this, this ego that's stopping you all from making any movement on real measurable social justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Michael Hendricks.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Justin Michael Hendricks. I am a Parkland College student and creative homo is the new homeboy. Blue lives don't exist. Stop draw the equivalence between racial identity and a job as your career is a choice being done by choice and not being black and brown. This morning I woke up to videos of Jacob Blake being held and shot in the back. In front of his children by blue lives in Tulsa, Wisconsin. Currently he is surviving at the moment. Stay strong, black man. These same blue lives that are killing, that have killed Breonna Taylor and held down Aliyah Lewis physically abusing, oh, when you say, so no, when we say to fund the damn police, that's exactly what we mean. If you aren't equipped mentally first to do the job, then honestly, why are you doing it? Why are you here at all? City council to city cops. And oh, I forgot to mention, there were more, I need y'all to check on that. It's time to use the monetary resources and mentalities to actually create community commitments. Let it be known, Urbana, give me the loot as black and brown livelihoods are still lingering for a life without living in fear of people who be, who believe backing the blue lives mean to bury us beneath the ground of white patriarchy and supremacy covered up behind a badge to protest. Once again, there are great people that I have met like Sergeant Jay Loken and those that also choose to be just like him. And then there are those who are people who are police who choose to position themselves over people no different than those who sit in study sessions awaiting election seasons to actually come out and do those shows for the appeal of people to continue your corruption. Diane, time's up, sis, the streets have spoken. They want a new mayor and you should feel the same by campaign coin or written in vote. If it takes that, I'll be the mayor if need be, be sensed. So you don't feel too comfortable because you shouldn't be on your throne. It's actual seat for the community. I close with in police brutality, in gun violence, in black and brown bodies, underprivileged people in areas of the areas wifi while they're in school right now during the pandemic. Thank you, take care. My name is Justin Hendricks. Goodbye.
Okay. And last is AJ.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. To start off, I did want to call you out, Diane. The last, it was the last city meeting when we were outside shocking, you didn't have your screen on, but we saw you having a conversation with someone else, which showed that you obviously didn't care about what someone was saying when they were making an excellent point. That, like, if you're, if you're going to be a leader of anything, you have to be willing to listen to the people and just because we can't see you, like, that, that's just, that's not right. You assume that no one was looking and we had a straight line of view of you talking to someone else and you weren't paying attention to someone's comments. I did want to make another comment on Aliyah Lewis and one of the things that I've noticed, there was a moment in the video when the cop goes right for his gun, puts his hand on his hip. You see that time and time again across this country. It's pretty clear that they need training. They're extremely paranoid and like, you shouldn't just pull out a gun on anyone just because they're not complying. It's not against the law to be disrespectful to, to the police. So there's very clear issues that no one wants to talk about, especially with the juvenile arrest data. I second that as well. I know people mentioned that before, but why, why aren't y'all talking about that? It's time to stop putting this on the back burner. If you haven't caught on by now, people want change. A lot of people want change. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Bo David Barber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, I wasn't really going to comment tonight. I'm tired. I've had to hike, I've been on three different Zoom calls today already for a box, you live of like six hours, but you know, and I'm going to be on several ones more this week, but whatever. First of all, work to get the charges dropped against Aliyah Lewis. I, I, I don't pay this whole deal. I just don't get this whole deal about like, you know, there's, there's legal stuff behind it or whatever. Drop the charges against Aliyah Lewis, my God. We could be done with this already. Secondly, uh, we made a lot of, you made a lot of progress last week, Diane. You didn't interrupt Meghan at least once, but then you, you took a step back. You ain't going to give her, her minute that she has left and it's just, you know, it's, it's disappointing. I thought we came a long way from last week, but you know, it's, it happens, there's some minor step backs, you know? You can correct for this and you can give her a minute back because people like Meghan, people like Rita, people like Amina Payne, people like Tracy Chong build their whole, they, they build their whole day around this thing. They move around, they, they are busy. They are busy doing all this other work in the community to try and help people out legitimately when, you know, the city council says its hands are tied or, you know, just goes against what the community's best interests are. It's really disheartening to kind of see that. So I, I politely ask, all my snark and everything aside, just because it's already a long weekend and only Monday, and I'm, I'm sure y'all can understand, but we're going to be here every single Monday, just, just to, just to point out the obvious problems that, I can't even put it to words, the perpetuation of the systematic issues that we're seeing by the hands of this current council because they're refusing to act. Now, I understand that, you know, people got to do stuff. You know, y'all doing work. I, I respect that, I really do, but just, you know, at the same time, this is your job. If you're not coming into this with like, you know, what's going to really be the best thing for my, you know, for all the people in this city? I, I don't, I don't know. I really don't. But at the same time, give, give Meghan her, give Meghan her time back. I mean, hell, I can give you, I can give her the two minutes I have left on mine and you can give for hers. I see you hovering over that stop button, but I'm going to, I'm going to keep going a little bit. But, you know, just give, give Meghan her minute back. My God, they, she and several others moved their time around this the entire time. They put so much work into this, but you know what? I'm just going to stop before I keep blithering on and on and on. So I yield the rest of my time, give it to Meghan, by God.
And Meghan McDonald.
Oh, thank you, Diane. Yeah, I actually had a minute 46 left, so if that could be accurately represented.
Absolutely.
Thanks. So I guess I'll just condense what I was going to say. If you want to support Aliyah Lewis directly, please reach out to me at McDonaldPress@gmail.com. McDonald, like the restaurant, press, like, press the button. If I sound angry every week and not full of tears, it's because I cry on my off time. I suffer and mourn the fact that Urbana is just as violent and corrupt as everywhere else. I used to really love it here. I cry because Aliyah has difficulty getting jobs, getting support, food, mental health care, keeping her phone on. I cry because she is my friend and my friend is scared and you have abandoned her and therefore you have abandoned me. I won't forget this and I will show up to every meeting until you're gone or admit you're wrong. So back again to the Aliyah Lewis case, I can't help but think of her with this news of Jacob Blake being shot seven times in the back by the police with Jacob's back turned. These cops you claim are in our community to serve and protect, he walked back to his car where his three small children were after breaking up a dispute in his neighborhood. Jacob Blake had just broken up this fight. He was doing what he called, what we call community intervening or community policing. We can do these things ourselves. What we can't do is legally protect ourselves from the domestic terrorists that are police. Why does Jacob Blake's case remind me of Aliyah's? Because I have read comments on articles about both of them where racists go off about they deserved it and should have complied with the orders. I think about how Aliyah was probably doing a better job at de-escalating. I think about how Aliyah was probably doing a better job at de-escalating her situation of domestic violence as compared to the police who came in and completely escalated the situation. I think about how lucky that recording that went viral didn't end up with Aliyah shot or suffocated. I don't mince words because that is a very real outcome that could have happened. The Hillard Heinz Independent Investigation of the Community Known Misconduct of the Urbana Police Department was supposed to be today and no one was notified that it was moved. I had to personally reach out to Jared to find out if the presentation was still happening. Hillard Heinz was chosen by Mayor Marlin who is cop endorsed. Hillard Heinz is a Chicago independent investigation and security firm. The chief of operations and the chief of investigations both used to be police. Why are we having cops investigating cops? Because the results that will be yielded will reflect favorably on the Urbana PD, the officers who brutalized Ms. Lewis and Mayor Marlin. If not, I will be absolutely shocked. I will be giddy if something comes back and actually shows us what we already know. I'll end with a quote from MLK Jr. He said, "I must confess that over the past few years, I have been gravely disappointed with the white moderate. I have almost reached the regrettable conclusion that the black person's great stumbling block in his stride toward freedom is not the white citizen's counselor or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative peace, which is the absence of tension, to a positive peace, which is the presence of justice." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to new business. First up is ordinance 2020-08-042, which is ratification of emergency order 2008. And that was the order regarding Phase Four operating guidelines covering governing seating, occupancy in bars and restaurants and use of face coverings. And then there's another emergency order 2020-08-043. Before we start the discussion, I just wanna provide some context for these. I wanted to let people know that over the past few weeks, city staff, myself, from the city of Urbana, city of Champaign, Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, University of Illinois, and many, a number of the scientists who've been doing the modeling on campus have met several times, along with officials from the county as well. And we received updates on the plan to reopen campus. This was a work in progress. Those of you who work on campus know that, that it's taken an enormous amount of planning to get to this point. The, the, the whole campus reopening plan centers around the ability to test frequently, test everybody on campus at least twice a week, get those results turned around very quickly and then be able to do contact tracing and if necessary, isolating and quarantining. And what was emphasized to us every single time we met was the importance of the collective efforts of the community to adhere to the basics that protect us all from COVID, which is wearing masks, staying distances, avoiding gatherings and things like frequent hand washing. And people, things changed on an hourly basis in this pandemic and sometimes with regard to the reopening of campus and this was no different. So last week, we worked very closely with public health. Well, the previous week, the Public Health District had a special meeting, the board, and they passed an ordinance which gave them local authority to enforce masking. It also allowed for individual responsibility and accountability for masking. And then we worked very closely with the Public Health District, city of Champaign, the university to craft these emergency orders regarding masking, regarding seating only indoors, in bars and restaurants, distancing and then gatherings. And it's also very clear and agreed on is that the next three to four weeks are going to be the key really to the rest of the semester here. So their, the university expected about thirty thousand students to return to the community. I don't know what the exact number is now, but we'll know when they'd have their official count in another week or so. The, the, they expect an increase in the number of positive cases because of all the people coming back to the community, but they also expect to be able to minimize the spread of the disease with the testing, the contact tracing, isolating and quarantining. But they also needed us as the community to join in this effort. And the focus, and that's why the focus has been on the masking and the gathering and minimizing the number of people really being indoors in bars and restaurants and especially standing in crowds in bars and restaurants. So we thought it was very important to have consistent regulations and orders across the two cities because people move freely back and forth, especially students, but others as well. And that's why these orders were developed very closely with the city of Champaign. And they're, they're very close in, in, in language with the cities of Champaign. So the first order is related to the bars and restaurants and in general, you know, the text in front of you, but in general, it requires patrons to be seated indoors in bars and restaurants. People can stand to go to the restroom if they're standing in line to pick up an order. They can stand, but they need to be wearing a mask and six feet apart. And then they also have some rules related to if you're playing pool, you can have no more than two people standing for that, but you must wear a mask and not be eating or drinking. It also requires face coverings in the establishments and for the Class A bars, which Urbana has seven that are open right now, after nine o'clock, it's twenty-one years of age and older. The, we can talk about the other emergency order in a minute, but the, the enforcement aspects of this really for masking, it's first calls to the Public Health District. And we're counting on the business owners, the managers, to be the first line for getting people to comply. They'll be supplying the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation. The Chamber of Commerce has many different materials available to the businesses that have been supplied regarding masking and signage and that sort of thing. And we're working very closely with them. So any questions or comments on, on this particular one? Bill?
Just curious about the, I guess, the legal vetting for this one and then the next one as well. It just seems like there's been a kind of an uptick in public comment about the legal basis for these orders. And I just wanted to hear from Mr. Simon, if he's on the call, what, what his opinion is and then also, you know, you mentioned that you worked with Champaign and the U of I. Did their legal departments get involved as well?
Everyone's legal departments were involved, yes. Jim?
I worked closely with Champaign's legal department on this. The substance was primarily drafted by Champaign's legal department as well as Matt Rushley, who is their assistant city manager, who is formerly, he's an attorney and is formerly with the legal, their legal department. These orders are also consistent with the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District ordinance as well as the Phase Four guidelines in case of restaurants and bars. The governor's Phase Four guidelines that have been actually created by the Commerce Department as well as the Illinois Department of Public Health. Shortly before these orders were crafted, with, as Diane indicated, university input, collaboration of Champaign, Champaign Public Health District and Urbana, as well as the county in general. The Illinois Department of Public Health adopted emergency rules regarding masking and social distancing. And the site to those regulations are contained in the definitions of both of these draft orders, which is seventy-seven Illinois Administrative Code 690.50. It is also worth noting that virtually every challenge to this kind of regulatory activity at the state level, challenge to Governor Pritzker's executive orders, as he calls them, have been sustained by the courts. So we have done a lot of research in this area. You know, by virtue of the nature of our own Urbana city code regarding parties and gatherings, we do have an ordinance regarding what we call nuisance parties. And there's a citation to that in the second one that Diane will discuss, but I might as well cover them all and together. And it's basically, among other things, putting people's lives and health and safety at risk. Parties that put people's lives, health, safety at risk, among other things described in the ordinance, constitutes a nuisance party, which is enforceable. Now, we heard this evening about how the police did not go barging in for whatever reason. I wasn't there. I don't know where this occurred, but I will take at face value that the representation that they didn't go barging in. If you look at the ordinance or the regulation that the Public Health Department, the Illinois Department of Public Health put, they have that same three-step approach in the rules and regulations regarding businesses. That, that set of administrative procedures or rules, the emergency rules, are incorporated into both of these emergency orders that have been issued and sought to be ratified by you all. So it has been vetted legally. There was a choice that was made regarding single family versus multiple family. Campus area where there is high traffic and people gathering much more likely than beyond this, what we define as campus area. Obviously, Champaign's is pitched towards what they call campus town, but it's wider than that area. Again, where there are, you know, very much, you know, history, way, going way back before COVID, of people gathering in large groups, very large groups and all. And so everyone felt it was important to try to put the brakes on these kinds of gatherings.
We are taking an education-first approach. There were, over the weekend, there were, we had two calls regarding gatherings. Both of them were in West Urbana, pretty close to the Lincoln Avenue corridor. And both times, when the, when the police responded, it was, you know, letting the, the partyer, partyers know that this was against the emergency order and asking them to disperse. So there were no citations issued this, this week or over the past weekend. We'll, we'll also be sending a note around to all of our liquor license holders just summarizing the, the orders, remind, and, you know, letting them know exactly what they say. And again, offering signage if they need it and that sort of thing. So it's, it's, it's starting with education. We work very closely with the university. They have student group that also is on duty from ten PM to two AM on weekend nights. I think it's Thursday through Sunday. And they also make the rounds of parties that have been reported. So it's an attempt to first educate, you know, before issuing citations. The, the goal is to get compliance.
Those who have some form of connection with the university community, I happen to, 'cause I teach in the law school in the spring, so I'm on the email lists and the text message lists. And they have done, spent a lot of time, this contrary to a couple of comments, this was not thrown together by the university. I'm daily getting two or three messages from the university on changes, modifications, reasons why. And they have taken a very, very careful approach. They have rules in place for those who test positive and how to quarantine them or somehow, you know, limit their access. They're working on tracing. They have developed this saliva test, which is a very rapid test and it's probably the cutting-edge test right now in the nation that has been approved by the FDA. So they have been very active in the science as well as the program design and how to roll this out and supervise it across the campus. And obviously, we, Champaign, have tried to dovetail within our areas their, their approach. Obviously, we're not dictating every, testing every or twice a week, that kind of thing. But they have approved both Champaign's and our emergency orders.
Thank you.
Mary Alice?
Diane, would you be able to give some background in terms of how the executive orders are being used? I know back in April, we had talked about granting emergency orders, giving you the ability to grant emergency orders and how we're leveraging those for this specific pandemic?
Are you talking about the previous emergency orders?
Yeah, all the emergency orders that have fallen under, just kind of a generically, I mean, why we're using this strategy here, emergency orders, instead of a traditional bringing something up to committee of the whole and then the city council?
Oh, gotcha. Well, we're in an emergency. I mean, we've used the word unprecedented public health crisis. You know, we're, you're almost out of words at this point. However, what we find in this pandemic, as I mentioned, things are changing daily. And these emergency orders for the most actually have been in response to conditions that come up. We, we are navigating from point to point during this pandemic. So some of the early emergency orders were related to giving the city the flexibility to allow for outdoor dining or use of the sidewalks or selling things on the sidewalks or for businesses to do carryout, curbside pickup. We have an emergency order that allows for outdoor music for, and several businesses are taking advantage of that. So these orders are in response to specific conditions, specific needs of the community. These last two are in direct response to the return of the University of Illinois students and that has been a work in progress as well. And I don't believe that they would have, we, we had no idea two or three months ago even what conditions we'd be facing today. I think we all expected that we would be in a better place than we are today, but we're not. So we've had people advocate for much stricter emergency orders. We've had people say, "Go back to Phase Three." We tried to draw a line, you know, we're, we're kind of drawing a line between individual rights, between freedoms and flexibility, but also protecting the safety of the public. And our number one priority right now is protecting the health and safety of the public, minimizing the spread of the disease, protecting our regional healthcare system, which serves a twenty-five to thirty-county region of over a million people. So these orders in place right now, I don't know how long we're going to need them. We'll be assessing this, you know, on a week-by-week basis. But as I said, all indications by the people doing the modeling on campus, by the Public Health District, state and local, by the governor's office is for this campus, this community, right now, the next two to four weeks are really going to determine how we're gonna operate for the next three to four months or at least get through this semester. So yes, it's, it's hard. Yes, it limits people's ability to have gatherings, but we really should not be gathering in large groups and parties. And, and we are trying, these are designed to protect the health of the community and it's based on the best available information we have and we're basing it on science and the data that is being presented to us. And we have to be consistent across Champaign-Urbana and the campus. It just doesn't work to go out and do things completely different in, from one community to the next. Not in this case. Bill?
Yeah, first one, I did look up on the website the quarantine and isolation procedures for U of I and they aren't telling people to go home, they're telling them to stay home. And they aren't telling people to, to go home to their parents, they're telling them to stay home. And I assume that means their campus home from what they're, the way it sounds is, says, don't go to classes, stay home. Um, and I, I think if there are people that they're living with, if they're living with parents currently or other vulnerable people, the public health district and university will work with them to try to find a safer place for them to isolate if they've tested positive. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. I think um, there might have been some misunderstanding there. Um, for uh, I guess for the, the restaurant one, is that different, is there a difference between Champagne and Urbana? I thought that Champagne said that they couldn't, they could have outdoor seating only. Is that true or is that?
That was for, Champagne has designated a campus district for outdoor seating only.
We don't have that.
We don't have that. Ours is um, uh, we allow indoor seating.
Um, for the, the, and the other point I wanted to talk a little bit about was the difference between um restaurants and, and homes. I know we, the public health department, the university, they're worried about the super spreading events. Um, and that's what this is geared toward. And they wanted some, to have something that they could rely on to help enforce that. Um, hopefully, you know, it won't need to be enforced much. People will catch on. Um, part of it, you know, especially when there's drinking involved, I think it's easy to forget. Um, and when you're at a place like Riggs, they actually have people going around to remind you. So they have, uh, and I was reminded, um, I went to get a growler last week and um had a beer before, well, you know, they, they'll make your growler and put a cooler for you. So I went outside and was carrying my beer and um getting ready to sit down at a picnic table. And I took off my mask too soon and uh, you know, there wasn't anybody around, but as I'm on the way to picnic table, I was standing up and somebody came by and um, actually, I think it might have been Matt's wife came by and said, just want to remind you, you have to keep your mask on till you sit down. And that's what it takes, that kind of constant reminder. Um, and if uh, you know, for private, private parties, if somebody, if you have a designated safety to be that reminder, that would be a good idea um to have somebody kind of designated to remind people, you know, what they're, even, you know, when it's, there's 10 or less and 10, 10, 10 guests with plus roommates and everything, that can be pretty, a pretty good size um gathering even, even legally. So yeah, I think you need somebody like that um kind of to remind people. Um, I know that in my department, people have been working really hard for all summer, you know, taping off furniture where, so you can't move the furniture because they don't want it moved to be closer, all kinds of signage around. The students have been really good so far um as far as, you know, when they're on campus. I think they've been really good. Um, I think they really appreciate the risk. Um, some of us older people are taking, being around students. Um, so they have been really respect, respectful so far. Um, so I, I'm glad we're able to work with the health department um to that extent. Um, I would kind of be in favor, I think, of expanding um the residential part to single-family as well. I know some of the houses I lived in, whereas in my twenties and thirties, were not on campus, but we did have some pretty good sizable parties. And I, so I don't, I don't see any reason not to. I don't know. Um, I, I do feel like it's kind of targeting students too much, but I understand, you know, that, that's the, the current focus is to try to keep the, the people who are coming in from areas in Illinois where the incidence has been higher, where it's been 3%, 4% around most of Illinois, um, to try to keep that from getting out of hand these first few weeks. Um, I, I wanted to check one other thing on uh, I didn't, if uh, for the private parties, it said public space adjacent. I was trying to figure out if it would impact any sort of free speech event. And um, if somebody, I mean, it wouldn't, like the protests that we saw that this, or the demonstrations this weekend, um, would that qualify under this as a private party?
No, no, free speech events do not.
Okay. Because we knew what that was going to be in advance, uh, obviously a free speech event, uh, would not want to, with this kind of an order, you know, issue a prior restraint uh order. Uh, that would not be appropriate. If you look at the second, the oh nine emergency order, I think if you really study it, you'll realize the difficulty uh legal in Champagne had and we in legal here in Urbana had. Because obviously, let's say, now the question is, what about fraternities and sororities? Well, they may have more than 10 people living in the house. They could have, what, 50 people, living dorm style or what have you. And because they have a legal right by lease or whatever, however it's structured in the fraternity houses and sororities, they have a right to be on the premises. So there could be theoretically, as you brought up, Bill, right on, 50 attendees at a party and then 10 more guests at a party. But we had to recognize the right of ownership. Then you get into the question, okay, what about a house where a student is leasing a room? Has no relationship organizationally or otherwise with anyone else living in that house. It's not an apartment house per se. It's somebody who owns a house and leases, you know, rooms or students, a student rents and then sublets rooms. Trying to craft a, an emergency order that attempts to address every single possible living arrangement, it would probably run five or six, seven, eight, nine pages. And that was not a goal either. So, and we spent a lot of time legal on both sides of Wright Street on that issue. And finally Champagne decided to bite the bullet and say dwellings, uh, you know, three-unit dwellings or greater are defined as multi-residential dwellings and all. And they made a cutoff on that. And we said, okay, we'll follow that to be consistent.
Okay. And then um, just one final thought for um, the, the, these are ordinance violations, not criminal charges. And um, I know we have a intergovernmental or some kind of agreement with the campus police. And I think Champagne that they can write ordinance, Urbana ordinance violations. Um, is that right? Do, do both departments have the capability to write ordinance violations for Urbana?
Uh, I, I have to admit, I don't have the answer to that. Um, but yes, these are, as you indicate, these are definitely ordinance violation matters. And the fine is not $750 that was repeatedly portrayed in public comment. It can go up that high. Uh, but if there, like for nuisance parties, if there is a fine, a, a minimum fine set, like our minimum fine schedule set, and the ordinance is written as a nuisance party, whether it has to do with these um orders, these emergency orders or not, that's what you all voted on as far as the, you know, the minimum fee schedule. Uh, if there is nothing in the minimum fee schedule, if a, an activity is not in the minimum fee schedule, such as violating emergency uh order 2009, then it's anywhere from a dollar up to 750. Maximum of any violation is 750.
The way, the, the way this is set up is that um if there is an ordinance violation um with us, that a student receives, it does get reported to the dean of students. And um, just like a underage drinking ticket gets reported to the dean of students. And then the uh, it's really this, the U of I discipline system that's going to have the, the.
When it comes to students and.
When it comes to students, yeah.
Okay, thanks. And um, you know, I think this might even, if there are fines, um, they're levied eventually, it might be an opportunity to, to test out um differential fines based on socioeconomic circumstances of the people, um, inability to pay. We've talked about that before. I don't know if there's any way to formalize that, but certainly in an informal way, um, you should be able to consider that when you decide on the amount of fine, I would think.
The main thing is education and warning and just getting, getting people to comply. Um, I do want to also add, you asked about quarantining. Um, the university has also set aside rooms for students to quarantine in as well. They don't necessarily, they don't have a place to, you know, if they need to get out of their dorm room, they'll put, they do have rooms set aside for that. Mary Alice?
Um, I, so I had a couple of comments about the second order. I didn't know if we were going to go order by order or what, what the procedure was there. Um, I, I will say that I was one of the people who reached out to Diane over several weeks asking her about um what the response was going to be from the city when the students came back. Uh, I've been contacted by numerous people asking me, how is the city going to handle parties that happen in our community that are outside of the bounds of the university? Specifically, people are very concerned about fraternities and sororities. Um, and not to say that they're the only people who have parties. Um, but there have been numerous concerns from people, residents in the West Urbana area who have been very concerned about it. Uh, so the single-family households are in West Urbana as well. So there's a lot of group homes in, in Urbana. I have one on one side of me and I have a fraternity on the other side of me, so I'm surrounded by them. Um, so I just wanted to be clear that in terms of the campus designated area, which is University, right, Pennsylvania, no, Florida and race, right? It's any, it's any living structure within that area, which, which would fall under this emergency order. Um, and then the other thing I just want to be clear, several people have said it, but it is a plus 10. So uh, I believe Adam had mentioned if his family came to visit, that it would be, you know, his parents came and then his own family would put them over the, uh, over, above the limit. Um, which if he has 10 family members visiting plus his, then it would be over the limit. But it's not included of the residents who live in that physical location in terms of the plus 10s. I just kind of wanted to be clear about that. Um, the other thing, and I know that university is doing the quarantine, which everybody's been talking about, but in addition to that, they're also delivering meals to those people. Um, so there, there already is uh campus dining that is delivering meals to students who have been asked to be quarantined either because they've been in close contact with somebody or because they themselves have tested positive. Um, so I, I just kind of wanted to give a little bit of that background. Um, and also to say, I, I agree with Bill. I, I am not opposed to extending the 10-person limit beyond the campus area, but that's up for discussion with council and the mayor. And I know that we're trying to stay uh in lockstep with Champagne as well. So I do understand the need to have consistent rules across the community.
Well, and, and the approach was, let's start with this and see what, what happens. Um, and if, you know, these, these are meant to be flexible and adaptable. And these emergency orders go into effect, they can end at any, you know, at any time when we decide it's time to end them. So, so they're meant, they're meant to give us the flexibility needed to respond to how things are going. And this virus has a mind of its own. So.
I think one of the uh, call it, you know, stop and take a look is the, after the Labor Day weekend. I know into my conversations with Diane as well as Champagne Legal, they're looking to see where we're at or where they're at, at uh, you know, right after Labor Day weekend. So that's what, two weeks away?
Sharice and Jared?
You had to stand up before me. Go ahead, Jared.
Okay, thanks, Sharice. Um, so Jib is uh, so everything that's written in either one of these ordinances, we're saying, we're granted the authority to say that we can do the things that are in there based on the state executive orders plus the other things that are listed in there?
Yes, and there's more than just that. There's our overall obligation to protect the health, welfare and safety and lives of um our citizens, business people, uh, people who work in. Um, and, and that, I hate to use the expression because it's probably going to be misconstrued by some, but we have what are called police powers. It has nothing to do with police forces or policing as has been the uh topic of discussion uh in public comment. But the goal is to protect public health, safety and welfare. And so we have that overriding, plus we are a home rural municipality. And therefore we have uh rights, if we wanted to, to go beyond uh what IDPH and the governor's orders and rules and regulations provide.
It, so that includes like, uh, for example, the uh section D of the 42 ordinance uh or uh about the security cameras at establishments? We're, we're allowed to tell them that they must turn over their security footage to us now or, or else?
Yes. I, I don't think there's, somebody's going to say, turn it over to us now or else. I mean, obviously, some of that uh is how, how long do those security cameras in establishments? And I'm not even sure all the establishments or any of them have security cameras and all. Um, police department would know that. I don't know that. Uh, but we don't know how long they keep their footage. They're not public bodies, so they're not subject to the Records Act or any of that kind of thing. And obviously, like any other law, regulation, rule, ordinance, or in this case, emergency ordinance, there has to be some reasonable level of enforcement. And I, I would hope that no one, no law enforcement officer from any of the communities or enforcing agencies will go barging in and ripping up the place demanding uh security for you. I would hope that there would be some reasonable rationale on how they approach that. Frankly, I hope we never have to get to that point. Because, and I, my guess is that the owners of bars and restaurants don't want to have, you know, be a spreader. I think they want to be spreaders.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I get you. Um, outside of the, that legality question, why do we want that in there? What, what's our hope? What do we hope to gain from having this written into the 42 ordinance?
If somebody contacts, let's say Urbana Police Department, uh, which would likely be for an Urbana uh establishment, and says, they're not enforcing the masking order.
That would be the public health department.
Or the public health, um, but we may be brought in. Or the public health department wants to see the footage uh to verify, is this complaint a legitimate complaint? You know, what's, what is, you know, what is the magnitude of the complaint? Is it one or two people? Uh, people, we all have a tendency sometimes to conflate what we see. Is it one or two people or is it just flagrant ignoring, in this case, the emergency order in the public health district uh ordinance? And, and obviously whoever ultimately enforces it will want to know that.
So it's to investigate complaints, that's why we want it in there? Because I don't know, I presume, I don't, I don't know that we have any complaint in Urbana that field this. The only ones I've ever heard this coming out of is like, you know, Red Lion, which is in Champagne, uh, and some of the other campus bars, the New Cam's, those places. But we don't have any of those bars in Urbana. I don't understand why, why we need to have that in Urbana when we're not, those are the only places I can think of that that would even apply to.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow in, or this Friday or Saturday. Or maybe a fraternity says, let's not have a party in the house. Let's go over to XYZ Bar in Urbana. They're, they're more lax apparently than Champagne Campus Town bars or whatever. We don't know. So we have to have the tools available. Again, I, I don't envision, you know, random checks and just dropping in and say, up against the wall, we want to see your footage and all. Uh, it's going to be, if, if, if we learn that there is, you know, non-compliance with the order, somebody's going to call, that's how we're going to learn, most likely. Somebody's going to call somebody and somebody's going to be asked to go over and check it out. And part of that checkout, like any other investigation, if you happen to have uh footage on it, uh, that could be helpful. Maybe not. I don't know. Depends on what the footage shows.
Okay. Uh, I'll save my further comments about that uh for council discussion. Um, I was trying to look up uh where we define our maximum fine, and I couldn't figure out where that was in the city code. Where, where do we define that in uh city code?
I, I'd have to look it up, but I think it's section, Urbana City Code, section 1-10. And then 1- I think it's 18 is our minimum fine schedule.
Yeah, the minimum fine. Yeah, the minimum fine schedule, I, I knew where that was.
There is before that, because 117 is our settlement procedure that you all amended a year or two ago. But before that is our, is the minimum fine. And it basically provides that if there is not a minimum fine provided in 1-18, then it's basically a dollar or up to $750.
Okay, it is 110. I concede in there. So, so paragraph B, whenever in this code a minimum, but not maximum fine or penalty is imposed, the court made its discretion, find the offender any sum exceeding the minimum fine or penalty, but do not exceeding $750. And there's two more sections that kind of talk about it right there with what you just said. Okay. That was one, one question I was trying to figure out where that, where that was, because it wasn't immediately obvious to me. I think that might have been, let me see, I'm just looking at my notes, hold on. And, you know, one, so I guess legally, I'm also questioning about, you know, the whole, what has Bill, Bill brought up with the whole private residence versus public establishment and enforcing rules in either case? And, you know, I feel like I've been philosophically agreeable with everything the governor has done in order to protect the general welfare of the public when it has to do with what we do in public around each other. And, you know, we already have the nuisance party thing written into our ordinance. So, you know, I'm just curious what the thoughts were from the legal team about, you know, restricting what people do in their, on private property versus what they're doing in, in public property? And that, you know, do we, does the same authorities that give us those powers give us the power to tell people what they do in their private homes? I mean, if people want to be irresponsible, that's, you know, that's, that's a choice that people make. But to tell them what they can and cannot do in their own homes is something I philosophically have a, have a real problem with. So I'm curious what the legal perspective is on saying, you know, here's what you can and cannot do in your, in your private home.
Well, that, that's, there is a clear sliding scale on what you can and can't do generally, not necessarily related to COVID-19 in your home. For example, zoning tells you what you can and can't do in your home. And yet it is your home. You can't operate a bar open to the public in your home without a license. You can't operate a house of ill repute in your home with or without a license. You can't, you can't bring in certain types of animals, exotic wild animals. You can't keep a tiger in your home. You can't, you know, you can't keep a vicious dog in your home, especially one that has bitten somebody. So there are all kinds of state and local regulations throughout the country, as well as here in Urbana, that tells you what you can and can't do in your home.
Sure, well, counterpoint would be, well, aren't all of those things gone through the legislative process before they were turned into law? You know, they were passed by elected people. There are all of those restrictions, tigers and all of the things you can't do, weren't, you know, summarily passed down by a single executive. And I know this isn't, you know, that there were multiple executives working on this, but I feel like because of the invasive nature of this particular thing, that this is something that should have been open to public comment, that probably shouldn't have gone through our emergency order, because we're really not allowing people to say, do we think as a community that it's completely irresponsible to allow and trust college students to do the right thing? Therefore, we're going to pass these rules that are going to allow us to, you know, impose stiff fines on them, should we so choose to, if they don't act in such a way. I don't know that, you know, I'm okay with us saying that, well, we're not going to, we're not going to let our community decide that. We're going to decide that for them and for the college students. So, you know, I understand that there's a little bit of, you know, nuance in certain things not being allowed inside private homes. But this is my, this is what I'm getting at. And so things came from a larger, you know, community process. This is just a top-down, boom-boom situation, where we're not really allowing people to tell us how they actually feel about what we're trying to propose to do here. That's my, that's my concern.
I appreciate that. But a lot of what the university ultimately has come to began to gel very recently. There's been a lot of planning at the university and, you know, earlier we've been involved in it. But a lot of this has come down now, you know, the deep, you know, the final details, at least for the moment, from the university, as well as the Public Health Department and Champaign and us working together. And obviously, Saturday, as I understand it, was official move-in. And today is the official start of the semester. We wanted to have something in place. But as you all have provided properly so, there is a ratification process. So this went into effect. When was it, Diane? Friday or Thursday? I can't remember.
Thursday.
And now, and now, a couple of days later, one business day later, two business days later, it's now before you all to either ratify or not ratify. If you don't ratify it, then obviously it becomes ineffective. If you do ratify it, it remains effective. If you modify it, it remains effective as modified.
And I would add, our nuisance party, most of the nuisance party calls traditionally come in about noise. This is a public health issue, which we've never faced anything like this before. And the public health aspect of this is related to size of gatherings in close quarters, people eating, drinking, talking loudly, all of which contributes to the spread of this disease. So these orders are specifically focused on the public health aspects of COVID-19. And as far as an emergency order or top-down, that is what an emergency order is. Gives us the ability to do this. But again, you as the council have the ability to modify it, put a sunset date into it. You know, it's in your hands now. But this was done for public health purposes.
That, that's all my legal questions. I'll save the rest of my comments for council discussion. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sharice?
The only thing with, with both of these particular orders that I would modify actually would, would be some type of fine schedule that would be placed in there. Mainly, mainly because it, I think it, it allows the public to understand the, the bite of it. And not only that, but also understand that it doesn't mean that we're going to fine you $750 or something, that there would be some kind of, of fine schedule. The other thing I'd like to say regarding having been a student at U of I, and granted, it was quite a few years ago. But I can say this, and this is how it was a few years ago, a few decades ago. I went to many apartment parties. I went to many parties that were at some, were at someone's house, not just on-campus facilities. And these were students that lived off-campus. Used to very much frequent an apartment building right down the street from the city building for partying purposes. So, and it's, the, I think the thing is, like what you said, Diane, is that this is about public health. And as students, even back then, we may have been creating a fire hazard or anything else. There were times when, when the people giving the party were actually borrowing electricity from the apartment underneath to have the party. Two apartments were partying at the same time, the one above and the one underneath. So students can be very creative in their gatherings. Regarding the single-parent home thing, and, and, I, I agree that, that you don't necessarily want to have to, want to have to tell people on their property that you can't do this. But I witnessed a couple of Sundays ago, probably it may have been a birthday party that had probably about 20, 30 kids, a bouncy house and everything, just down the street from where I live. And no one had a mask, not the adults and not the children. And I felt like, you know, because I've already been told off and cussed out when I've said something to any, anybody about wearing a mask, you know, you'd like to think that people would use basic common sense, but I think common sense left the building about 172,000 deaths ago. So I do not want to see my community savaged and ravaged with this disease. And at the same time, I don't, I don't, you know, I stay, I do me and my mother. Is basically how it is. I did not go to a birthday party that was given for my great, my great nephew just yesterday. And it, because I'm not going to put my mother at risk and I'm not going to put myself at risk. I think it's just, I would like to think that we could depend on everyone using basic common sense. But obviously, we can't. And so it's better to have something in place than nothing at all after folks start dropping dead or getting sick. Then you want to try to rush and put something in, in place. And I just don't want to see anyone in this community get sick. I don't want to see anyone on campus get sick. And I know that having been a college student myself, as I think most of us have been, we know that when we were 18, 19, 20, whatever, nobody could tell us what to do. But you might actually, you know, if you know that there's a rule that has to be followed, and it's not just about you, it's just, it's about everybody. And it's about keeping everyone well, that I think that, I don't, I don't think this is very heavy-handed, because it is about education first. And, you know, that's basically all I have to say.
Are there any other questions? Then we need to get a motion on the floor. Julie, you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to, to pass emergency order number 2008, Phase 4 Operating Guidelines Concerning Seating and Occupancy in Bars and Restaurants and Face Coverings.
I'll second.
That Bill Brown? Okay, moved by Julie, seconded by Bill Brown. Okay, council discussion. Julie?
No, I'll say that we as community, I as a community member had no control over whether or not the university reopened. And we've already made sacrifice in that my daughter, who is a 16-year-old, started her junior year of high school from home today. And those decisions were made knowing that there was a risk for increased transmissions, even worse than they have been around in the community and increasing around the country. And I think, so I support passing increased protections for short-term to deal with the huge increase in numbers to protect the most vulnerable people in our community, just like we already have, by things like not reopening the public school systems.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, this has been a very good discussion. I think that a lot of common sense has been used in establishing the guidelines that we're about to perhaps pass. I don't have anybody in my family that's currently at the university, you know, in attendance or anything like that. But, you know, obviously, this has been vetted through a lot of multiple organizations, not just the city of Urbana. And we're working in collaboration with them to try to make the best possible occur. I will say that, that I've attended the Urbana's Market at the Square several different weekends on Saturdays. And there I see people being thoughtful, wearing masks, following directions, lining up respectfully and distanced as they wait to be waited upon at different groceries, green grocery stands and other kinds of events. And marketing, marketing groups that are at the, at the market, you know, doing business. It's, there are thousands of people who come to that event. It is random people showing up to do their grocery shopping in the morning. And it works out extremely well. So if it can happen in that kind of example, I think it's possible for the university to experience also a thoughtful and respectful kind of approach to allowing other people to be protected and respecting them as a need to do that. And also respecting your right to have protection as well. So I thought it was, you know, one could say that, one could point to that as a really good example of how things work well. And I don't think that this ordinance is too pernicious for people's rights, considering that all rights of people to be healthy is a really overarching importance to us right now. We can have a discussion about what the maximum fine is, but when we realize that, that there are three steps that will be involved. In first, a warning. And then a second step, before you even get to anything talking about a fine, and that the fines are, are flexible according to any kind of common sense, depending upon the activity and, and really who, who wants to impose or just suggest to impose a fine, I don't know. But I think, I think we can work through all the problems. And if we look at it again after Labor Day, we'll probably know better whether this needs to be tweaked in one direction or another. That's all.
I do want to, you just reminded me, I wanted to let you know that I held, as the local liquor commissioner, I held two meetings the week before last week with, and invited all the liquor license holders to attend, actually outside, behind the city building, distanced. And we kind of gave folks a heads-up on what might be coming. So the bar, the liquor license holders, at least for the bars and restaurants who hold liquor licenses, did get a heads-up on the sorts of things that were being considered. So this didn't come as a total surprise to them. Jared, you had your hand up?
Since we're just discussing the first ordinance, I'll save my comments on the other one. For that one, I guess the main thing that I think I would like, if other council members were willing, that I would propose to you all, that I would like to see changed in this ordinance is with regard to the security cameras. And even if everybody thinks that that is generally the right thing to have in there, which I don't, I would eliminate that section D entirely if it were up to me. But I doubt that everybody's going to get on board with that. So what I would offer instead is a language adjustment, which in the, I guess it's all one sentence. But in the portion where it says, any establishment must provide immediate and unrestricted access, I would propose that we eliminate, must provide immediate unrestricted access, that any establishment may provide access to footage if requested. Yeah, but that's on the rest. So instead of must provide immediate and unrestricted, just to may provide access to footage.
Is that a motion?
I don't want to go for motion, if there's not going to be a support on it. I'd like to hear comments on what folks think about that amended language.
Well, why don't you make an amendment and then we can talk about it?
Will you support it if I do it?
Yeah, I'll second you.
Well, then I would make a motion to amend the ordinance to reflect the language change. Well, I'd screen myself in, uh, section four, subsection D of enforcement security cameras, uh, where it reads, "Any establishment must provide immediate and unrestricted access." Uh, cross out "must provide immediate and unrestricted" and replace it with the word, uh, "may."
"May provide access?"
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. So "must" goes away, "may" in exchange, and then "immediate and unrestricted," it goes away as well.
Okay.
All right, so I'll second that.
Oh, that was moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. Is there a discussion on that amendment?
So you just want "must provide access to, to footage" instead of, I mean, "may provide access to, to video footage from," instead of, instead of, um...
Yeah, you got it, Charisse.
Immediate, okay.
You got it.
So the establishment may provide access to, access to footage?
Yes, when requested.
I, I'm just curious why we would have it in there at all, because technically they could provide it at any time without us writing it into the ordinance.
Well, that's my whole point. I would eliminate it, but I just didn't feel like everybody would go for it. So I was offering to make it at least voluntary and leave it in.
Would, so I, I, I can understand, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to remove the word "immediate," um, and, um, clarify that the access is for the specific violation. I, I guess what I'm hearing you say is it's very broad right now, is that correct, Jared?
Um, I'm more, uh, trying to get at the...
Very restrictive is what he's getting at. Is that what you're getting at?
With the, with the being compelled legally versus it being voluntary to offer. That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at, not the, not the broadness of its attack, but the, uh, be compelling businesses to do it versus requesting that they provide it. I'm not okay with the compelling part. I don't think that that's necessary at this point. We're not dealing with that in Urbana. We don't need to compel legally the businesses or they face a fine. That's, that's more what I'm getting at. Does that make sense, Mariaus?
Yeah, it, it, it does make sense. I understand your concern, and, and it does make sense. I guess what I'm struggling a little bit with is this ordinance covers restaurants and bars, right? So if they say, "We're not going to give you access," then there's no way to say whether or not that they were in violation or not. Bill has a comment. Bill?
Uh, well, it says, "Pursuant to investigation of a specific complaint or upon observation or reasonable belief of any enforcement officer, an unsafe or unsanitary environment, et cetera." So if there's already a complaint, that means somebody witnessed a, it's a credible complaint, apparently, or you wouldn't bother asking for the footage. So it seems if anything, the, um, establishment might use the footage to, as exculpatory evidence when they went to pay the fine, they could show the footage, say, "No, nobody was doing this," and if you had the time and everything. So I don't think it, you really need it. I'd say just, officers should go ahead and write the ticket without looking at the footage if there's a credible complaint.
Bill Colbrook?
Um, I wouldn't support changing it at all. Uh, I think, um, a lot more, uh, greater legal minds than any of us here assembled have all vetted this, um, extensively, and I don't think we should be toying with it. I think it should, uh, go as written. Just my opinion.
Any other comments? Julie?
I also supported as written.
Just a rebuttal, Bill, you know, many great legal minds have said a lot of things were legal at one point or time or another, and we figured out later on that those things weren't things that we agreed upon as a society. So just because the legal department, uh, says that it's, uh, that it, that it's okay doesn't mean that it has to be the way that it is. That's just a remark.
Okay. Bill Colbrook?
And that's what the appeals process is all about.
Well, I guess we serve in that function as, right now.
No, we don't.
Are you ready to vote on this, uh, amendment? Charisse?
Can I, let me just, um, I guess my comment would be this. If, if we amend this particular, I don't really have a problem with the language as it is, and I don't have a problem with the language as Jared has, uh, offered as well. Um, maybe if, if, if in fact that we can have a compromise in the sense that should there be an issue where we don't have, um, we don't get access because the person may act, give access. And, and that's my question. If we have an issue where, where the, the bar owner does not give access, what's to be done if access is actually needed? I mean, in the sense that if, if, if we're, because it could be a dispute, to me is, is to anything. It could be, uh, as far as trying to get security footage about anything, um, it, it could be a dispute of somebody of the bar owner, um, not allowing people in because they don't wear masks. And, you know, it gets to one of these situations where enforcement is called, and you've got one side saying, "Well, we offered to put our mask on and they, they just booted us out." And then you've got the bar owner saying, "No, you weren't doing this," and da-da-da-da-da-da-da. Or vice versa, you know, "They just let us walk on in anyway." And the bar owner is saying, "No, I didn't do that." Um, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out a scenario where the, the language would be changed or, or would need it to be changed. And I guess we can always come back and amend it to the "must." If we have to, we can leave it and, uh, we could have it, you know, where Jared is concerned talking about the, the "may," we may, you know, that person, that establishment may do this. I don't think that a, a bar owner, if, if, if it was a, um, a dispute as to whether or not they complied or not in, you know, them versus a consumer, um, or, uh, if, um, I don't think, I don't know that they would not be willing to give access, so...
Yeah, the goal is to...
...point with that, that's all I'm saying.
I think there was a question for Jim in there. Jared?
Well, I, well, let me, let me respond to Charisse first.
Okay.
If it, if the "may" is inserted, then, and there really is a concern about an event at a bar or a restaurant, then what would happen is somebody would get an administrative search warrant, walk in, hand the, whoever's in the establishment at the moment, "I want the footage, I want it now. Whether you like it or not, I have a search warrant that's been issued by a court." I was hoping, and I think, we didn't discuss what the alternative to "must" be when the legal, the legal people got together and talked about this, but my guess is, and at least from my viewpoint, I would hope that we would avoid that kind of a direct conflict. Somebody would have to go to court and get a judge, and there would easily be established probable cause to issue the warrant, and then somebody would march into the establishment with a piece of paper that says "warrant" on it and demand the footage. Now, could somebody destroy the footage? You know, I, I guess, but, you know, we're getting into more, not just hypotheticals, but we're getting into hyperbole about this. The footage could be exculpatory or condemning of the owner because the IDPH regulations provide that it is the owner that is responsible for enforcing these very same kind of, uh, this very same kind of requirements that are in this emergency order and all. The only thing that's happened is ID, or the, uh, Champagne Urbana Public Health District, uh, modified that to say, and guess what? Individuals are also going to be responsible in the public health district area.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dennis?
Um, I think that we could use a model that was used by the city probably twelve years ago, when the no smoking ban in restaurants, public places, bars, and, um, uh, yeah, public places, was first passed by Urbana. And this was about two months, I think, before the state soon adopted the same policy. And the no smoking ordinance, uh, was to be, uh, enforced by the public health district, just as this ordinance will be enforced by the public health district. And when a instance occurred, when an individual was, was lighting up and smoking in a restaurant or bar, and the public health district received a complaint from, um, a client, uh, another, uh, individual who was eating and enjoying the bar, uh, then they would come and inquire about it. And the only, and, and really it was the bar owner who was responsible for maintaining the ordinance. Well, it was well-posted. There were signs at the entrance and in the bar or the restaurant saying that this is a no smoking establishment, and the ordinance was coded. So these signs made it clear for anybody who came in that there was an issue here to be complied with. I don't recall seeing that there was a requirement for signage to be, uh, placed, um, in the vicinity that we're talking about, but I think it would be a useful thing to have as part of the ordinance, that there needs to be signage indicating what's possible as far as ma, uh, wearing a mask and the distancing, so that the, anybody who was in there would have a good idea as they walked in the door what the situation was that they were contending with. I don't think that individuals were brought to trial, but the proprietors of the establishments were, were the ones who could face a fine. And I think that's probably the appropriate thing to do here.
I am?
Yes.
I believe either the, the phase four, uh, provisions that were adopted for bars and restaurants and/or the emergency rules recently adopted by the Illinois Department of Public Health require the kind of signage Dennis you are suggesting.
Many establishments already have that signage, actually. Okay, um, Jared?
Uh, just to respond, uh, just quickly to Charisse when you were talking about that, and, you know, Charisse, what I'm, I'm only proposing it, you know, because A, we don't have a problem with this happening in Urbana right now as far as our bars and restaurants are concerned, and we can come back and change the "may" to a "must" if it some, for some reason becomes a problem in Urbana. I would, I, my proposal with this and offering it to council is that I would rather have a, in this particular instance, less restrictive approach initially rather than a more restrictive approach, and we'll see what happens. You know, I, I don't, I don't want to put the full boot down on the, on the general public, to, to use a phrase, um, right away. If it turns out that it turns into a problem, I would, you know, support doing what we need to do to protect the public health, but I think we don't have a problem today. I don't foresee us having a problem because we don't have the places where this kind of thing is specifically going towards, so that's why I'm offering "may" instead of "must." That's, that's the real crux.
And Jared, what was the other, uh, part of it? Any other words that you were thinking of changing, or is it just...
It was just "must."
Unrestricted.
Yeah, just "must" to "may" and eliminating the "unrestricted" and "immediate" words.
The phrase would read, "Any establishment may provide access to footage from its security cameras."
Correct.
So...
That's fine. I'll go with that.
Yeah, after thinking about it, I think I'm going to vote against this. I think another reason they might, um, I don't think it's going to be used unless they really have to, but I think another reason they might want the footage is for contact tracing, and if there is something that, uh, is serious enough to want to do that, I don't think they want to come to see council and get permission first. I think that needs to be done.
Are you ready to vote on this? So we can move on.
Exactly what are we going to be voting on?
You're going to be voting on the amendment, which is to, uh, section four D, and this, the sentence would read, "Enforcement security cameras pursuant to the investigation of a specific complaint or upon observation or reasonable belief of any enforcement officer that an unsafe or unsanitary environment exists or recently existed. Any establishment may provide access to footage from its security camera systems upon request by the enforcement officer, any authorized agent of the City of Urbana Local Liquor Commissioner's Office, or an agent of the Champagne Urbana Public Health District." Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Ms. Laut?
No.
Ms. Hershey?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Okay, I'll go with yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion, uh, does not carry, fails five to two. Okay, so we're back to the original motion that's on the floor. Any more comments on that?
The only other comment I would have is that Bill brought up a very, uh, Bill Brown brought up a very good, um, point, is that because if there's, if there's a super, uh, so to speak, or something that's been in a particular, and they're trying to, to, to find that patient zero, so to speak, then we will need, that's, that's the main reason why I voted no. That we will need actually unrestricted, you, you don't want to get, because it's, it's going to be that, that particular bar that might be held accountable. And you don't, you do, it is a public health issue, and it's not saying that that bar will be, um, unduly fined or, or something like that, but just so that for, for public health reasons, we will definitely need footage that would, that could be, it, it's really important to the health and welfare of the rest of the public. So Jared, that's, that's the main reason. I just wanted to let you know, that's why I, I had to go with no, because I hadn't thought about the contact tracing and how quickly we can go from no, no cases to a hundred in, within days. And I had, I, I'm sorry, I had to think about that.
Further comment? Jared?
I mean, Charisse, I think the only, I mean, the reason why I have a problem with that is because we're assuming the worst in people, that somebody is going to try and hide something.
No, I'm not assuming, I'm not assuming the worst. I'm assuming, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm really thinking about public health. And that person, because we have so many, you know, people now that are so individualistic and, and thinking, not thinking about the, the common good, but only thinking of the individual good, and, um, this does be, this has been a problem. It's not like, it's not a problem, because it has been a problem. And I, I, I don't, you know, I just would not like to see there be a whole other public outcry, um, because one or two or three people could not be tracked down based on an, an another person's feeling that their freedoms are being infringed upon, when is this not about that? It's, it's about everybody's, everybody having the freedom to, to not be sick or to be lit, or to live even. That, that's basically it.
The other, the other factor is so many of students in this age, well, students in this age group are asymptomatic carriers, and we have tens of thousands entering the community at the same time. So it's the asymptomatic aspect of this that also is, has been a big factor in every decision that's been made.
That's, that's what I'm, what I'm thinking of.
Any other comments on this ordinance? Okay. Are we ready to vote? Okay, are we ready to vote? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut? Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Next up is Ordinance 2020-08-043, which is Ratification of Emergency Order 2009. Emergency Order Phase Four Operating Guidelines Concerning Number of Attendees, Social Distancing, and Use of Face Coverings at Parties and Gatherings. Is there a motion to get this on the floor?
I'll make a motion for that, so we can talk about it, certainly.
I'll second that.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Council discussion? Jared?
I guess everybody kind of heard what I had to say about it when I was discussing it with Jim earlier. So I'd be interested to hear one else's comments to that context of, you know, just due to the, what I would call extraordinary nature of reaching into people's homes and very specific people's homes and not generally applying it to the populace that we're singling out and doing something that we would not normally otherwise even think of doing. And I understand that the pandemic brings a measure of needing to, you know, take extreme actions in some certain circumstances. But I still think that this just goes a little bit beyond, beyond that without getting public inputs. I'm not saying that I don't feel like we couldn't figure out a way to do this responsibly, but I don't think that doing it without getting input from public and letting people know, hey, this is a thing that we're thinking about doing. Would, you know, would people support, are pursuing this, or are people not in favor of that? I just, I don't feel comfortable supporting this without getting that input from people first. So that's, that's my primary concern. I'd be interested to hear what other folks think.
Sharice?
Okay, this is what I think. This is what I've witnessed. This is what I've observed over the past few weeks within my neighborhood, which is predominantly black neighborhood. And we know that people that are black and brown are have a higher, higher risk, so it seems, of not just getting ill, but even dying of this particular virus. And I've observed not a lot of common sense. And I've seen what I suspect, but not sure of, possibly graduating parties, you know, high school grads, or maybe family reunions, nobody masks. Everybody's got one around their neck, but none of them, nobody has it over their face. Like I said, a couple of Sundays ago, birthday party, bouncy house, a bunch of kids. No mask even around their necks. And I really, really, to be honest, would not like to see Urbana Police having to roll up on, on somebody's wedding reception and, you know, and say, you guys got to go home, or some of you have to go home, or at the very least, wear a mask. And I would hope that, I would hope that, that people would have sense enough to wear masks, but that's not what I've observed. The smartest thing I observed was church across the street from my house where they had church service yesterday in the cars. And everybody was sitting in the car and pastor was giving his message over bullhorn. As far as I know, it could have been, could have been a microphone, could have been a P A system of sorts. But, um, you know, I, this is what I've observed driving around my neighborhood. And you would think that after all the death and after all, everything on the news, unless, unless you've lived under a rock for the past few months, and you, or you just, or you just don't care about other people's health, including those in your family. It, it's unfortunate that this, we even have to consider this, but it does need to be considered, unfortunately. There was a prom party in Mohammed that you would have thought that that the adults would have had sense enough to not hold, whereas like 10 or 15 kids got sick after that. It's unfortunate. And, and these are, these are times, yeah, I don't, I know for sure that under normal circumstances, this wouldn't even be considered. You know, nobody, nobody would want to pass this, but this, these aren't normal circumstances. These are normal days. These aren't normal weeks that we've been dealing with. And the only thing I could say to this is that the sooner we do what we need to do, it would be the sooner that we can do what we want to do. And you can't, we can't do what we, if we can't get together on what needs to be done right now, then this could be a perpetual issue for the next couple of years in trying to get back to what we want to do. So that's it.
I'm going to put that on a poster, what you just said there. I don't know which, who had your hand up first?
Mary?
Me?
Julie, go ahead.
We know that there's been a failure of leadership that's left to smaller communities like us to make decisions on our own about how we can protect ourselves. And we've all been doing that individually and doing that as a community as much as possible. I agree that community input is essential, but we've also been hearing in the weeks and months that I've been listening to city council meetings that sometimes we just have to take action when we know that action needs to be taken. And this is one of those instances. There's not time to wait for input. If we'd had national and, you know, more national leadership on this, we wouldn't be in this position. But now, you know, our kids aren't in public schools, we're all staying home to stay safe again. And if we don't take care of it right now, we have a huge risk. And like Sharice says, this actually is to protect the most vulnerable people in our community. It's not to penalize, it's actually to, to help them. So I think this is one of those instances where government needs to make a decision on behalf of everyone to, to stay safe.
Mary Alice?
So one of the things that I heard from public input was the idea of how are people going to know? How are people going to know that this is illegal before they, they break the rule? So my suggestion today, actually, you have I sent out a line and alert to all students, faculty, and staff, telling us that we had to be tested twice a week, even though they've heard the message, we've heard the message in email, we've heard it in presentations and everything. They send it out across the board. So I would really strongly recommend that the city, if it passes tonight, to contact the University of Illinois and ask them to notify all the students in this method. All the students have, practically all the students have cell phones. And I think it's really important because at the end of the day, what we want to happen is we want to have responsible people in our community. And the only way to do that is to get them thinking about what is reasonable. And so what this does is it says that it's reasonable to have nine or fewer people over to your house. We had to make a cutoff somewhere. And so we need to convey that message across the board. I agree with Julie. I think that we can't wait on this order. I think it's something that we have to implement right now. Now that said, I also understand that people feel like they haven't had an opportunity to have input into it. And so what I'd like to suggest is that we put a sunset on this. And also allow people to, if they have ideas on what they would like to see in it, then certainly during public input, that can be done throughout the next couple of weeks. So I'm just going to throw a date out there and people can tell me if that is reasonable or not. But I guess I would just put a sunset of one month on it, so four weeks would be my suggestion. Hopefully by then, we will know how well and effective that the university system is doing at identifying contact tracing, quarantining, and isolating cases. And we can revisit this at that time. So I guess I, I don't know if I have to offer an amendment to have a discussion. Is there a sunset date? I didn't see a sunset date on this.
No, there's no sunset. But yeah, you could offer an amendment.
All right.
September 28th, because that'd be the next council meeting that would allow us to vote.
So it would be notifying Section 4, which is duration of the emergency order.
To include the sunset of this order to September 28th.
I wonder if instead of a sunset, you could just put it on the agenda, because we can repeal any of these at any time, too. You can put it on the agenda for discussion and potential repeal.
Revisit it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would work as well. Jared, does that, does that, is that a middle ground?
Uh, I mean, we can revisit it at any time, I suppose. I guess I would prefer that it by default would sunset and not by default remain in effect unless we took action.
All right, so I'll make the amendment then. I'll make the amendment that we put a sunset of September 28th.
How do you want that to read?
I don't know how to write the sunset. So this is in?
Well, Section 4, "The order shall expire on the later of," and you know, gives
The later of September 28th and change that to the I, and then make when the governor is two, and then everything else subsequently three and four. I think would be the easiest way to write that.
So shall expire on the later of I, September 28th. And then two would be the governor issues or suspends the emergency order when the city council repeals or when the mayor terminates. So we have four options there instead of three. Is that right? Okay. All right.
I'll second that amendment.
Jim also had something. He had his hand up.
Okay. Jim?
Had to figure out the timing of this, whether the later of September 28th might somehow with the other three in there be extended beyond September 28th.
But we, yeah, we can figure it out. We understand the intent. So you want to reconsider the very latest on September 28th. So we'll figure out the intent and the language. Any just further discussion on that? Bill?
Yeah, I'm against a sunset because we could run up against a situation where, just like we had a couple council meetings ago, we had a severe thunderstorm, power went out, and then we couldn't meet. I would be in more preference to what Bill Brown and Dennis Roberts said, just put it back on the agenda. So if it doesn't make the agenda because of a, you know, a natural event, then we can always put it to the next agenda. You put a sunset on it, then it's just going to expire, to my understanding. Then it will be without an ordinance at all.
Comments? Dennis?
I think we should probably just say that we shall revisit it on September 28th. Because then we could take action if we want to. And if it was going to sunset, we would be taking action again to start it again. So what's the difference, to start it or to stop it? And then, yeah, it could happen that we wouldn't get to it immediately then, but we would certainly be wanting to put attention on it to review it. So sunset's kind of final revisiting is, I think, pragmatic and rational.
Mary Alice, I, I, I kind of have to, I can see the point, you know, just revisiting it instead of doing a sunset?
Hi, I'm trying to be, trying to balance some of the issues here. And I feel like if we put a sunset date on it, then it definitely forces us to discuss it by a certain date. We can even discuss it the week before, so that if we want to extend it, we can. But it just kind of forces it onto the agenda for us to have a discussion item. If it does that, then public will know specifically to provide input during that timeframe. And so I would recommend to Diane and the staff that if we want to continue this order, that the week before it's put on the agenda so that we can have that discussion, so that we don't, you know, so it doesn't run out, basically, I think, is Bill and Dennis.
Be at the committee of the whole, the week before. Okay.
Okay.
That'd be on the 21st. Committee for consideration. Okay.
So are we keeping the word sunset?
We're not using the word sunset. It will expire on, the intent is it would expire on September 28th unless you vote to renew it. But we will visit it. It will be on the agenda on the 21st. For consideration. Yeah, Sharice?
Um, I guess one of the things that I would, I would like to know is what would be the standards or the directives, even when we talk, when we have that discussion? For example, if the numbers were up or down, or would that, you know, be other than us just coming back and revisiting that particular, this particular ordinance? If the numbers are up the week before, would there still be a need to have a discussion as to whether or not we're going to continue the ordinance?
Well, we'll have a lot of data by then, and we'll have more information. We'll know how many calls we get as far as problematic parties. We'll know how many cases we have. We'll know if the university's still open. I mean, there's a lot. God, I'm confident they will be, but you know, a lot can happen, as we know, from one day to the next, and certainly in three to four weeks. And like I said, I think it's pretty universally believed that what we do over the next few weeks is going to determine the course of this thing. And, and so, yeah, we're going to have to base this on, on the same kind of data we've been basing every decision on, which is the science behind this and the public health recommendations. And it's not something that we should be doing on our own. We need to be also looking at what's happening on campus, what's happening in Champaign and throughout Champaign County. Because we don't live on an island here.
No.
Which is why we're doing this in concert with, with our community partners.
Okay.
So we'll make sure this language includes the expire on the 28th, but we will have it up for consideration for the committee meeting the week before.
I think we need to vote on that amendment.
Right.
Any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? This is on the amendment.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That pass is five to two. Okay, we're back to the original motion. Any further discussion on that?
As far as changing, making it more applicable to all residents in the city, I don't know. How do people feel about that? Should I go ahead and propose something? We could try that. How about amending it to read on page four, Section B, Item One, "Private property covered by this order includes, pretty much strike everything except any residential settings, buildings, or units anywhere in the city or common areas or parking lots related to any such residential settings, buildings, or units."
I would support that.
I would as well.
Okay, so moved. Okay, so moved. Is there amendment?
Second.
Can you restate the, the language, Bill?
Yeah, that's Section B, "Social distancing face covering requirements, number of attendees." Part one, "Private property covered by this ordinance includes," just get rid of the A and D and just have it part of the, uh, part of one, "Private property covered by this order includes any residential settings, buildings or units, anywhere in the city or the common areas or parking lots related to such residential settings, buildings or units."
And that would include the, the single-family homes as well?
Yep.
That includes every residential unit in the city?
Yeah. No, it wouldn't include that bouncy house I saw out on East Washington because that was right outside the city Friday night. But you're going to do so much.
Okay. So Section 2B would read, "One private," well, there wouldn't be a one, it'd be, "Private property covered by this order includes any residential settings, buildings or units, anywhere in the city or common areas or parking lots related to such residential settings, buildings or units."
Yep.
Okay. Are you ready to vote on that?
The amendment, yeah.
The amendment.
Okay.
Phyllis, or Phyllis, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay. Any further modifications? Are you ready to vote on the, Jared?
Uh, I just wanted to pose a question, um, about the, where was this? The individual attendees responsibility part and I don't know, I guess, um, fair comply. You know, why, why is it that we are trying to do that as well? And is it the city's intention that we would find 300 people at a party if we found them there? I mean, that's a lot of, a lot of tickets to write. I don't imagine whenever we've broken up an underage drinking party before that we write, manage to write more than five or 10 maybe. I'm just concerned about the application. So I'm curious about that and why it's not on hosts, but.
Well, first of all, I'm sorry, first of all, individual responsibility is a cornerstone of successfully fighting this pandemic and that's been a, that's been true all along. Secondly, this is actually one of the things the university has been very strongly supportive of, which was to hold students accountable for their, for their off-campus behavior. And this goes to then connection with the discipline system of the university. So it's not just a host responsibility. It's the individual person's part in all of this. And all the messaging focuses on care enough about the community to wear a mask, to distance, to, to follow the social, to follow the public health guidelines.
Have you ever been to a house party, Jared?
Been to a lot, Sharice.
Okay, so you know how I can get. I know, I, I know how I can get. I know how crowded and sweaty and everything else. I don't, I don't know, you know, it, it, it is, it is a choice that I made to go to those parties. And so therefore, and therefore, you know, there's, there would be responsibility on my end should, um, should I have ever been at one of those parties where the police did get called, which I never was. But, um, it would still be, you know, that's a choice that I would have made. And, and the thing, the thing that I know, or not know, but the thing I can understand with some of the, with some of the kids too coming to college is that for them, that's like their basic college experience. And, and a lot of them feel cheated. I understand that. But you're still going to be making a choice as to whether or not, you know, you, um, you participate in that. That's, it's still a choice. So, and it's not necessarily one of the stick things. It's one of those things where if it gets broken up, that is your stick, actually, I think. Not necessarily that they'll get a ticket, especially according to, according to what we were talking about regarding the fee thing. It's like the first thing I think is education. So, you know, that's how I've interpreted it. I could be wrong.
The university has made it very clear there will, there will be consequences. So, Mary Alice?
So I know that the city of Champaign has a whole page on emergency orders. Where do all the emergency orders sit for the city of Urbana?
On the COVID page as well. Champaign has over 20, has 20-something emergency orders. This is our ninth one.
It would be nice if we could call that out as like a news or something headline so that people can easily find it on our website.
Absolutely. We're also going to put together, we're putting together an FAQ for the liquor license holders and we can do an FAQ for the general public as well.
That would be great.
Also, the other emergency orders were very specific to the business community and this, this is the first couple that really apply to, well, now everybody in the city. So. Jared?
Uh, I have one legal question for Jim, right? Two quick ones for Jim. Jim, can you help me understand the rebuttable presumption in the administration section? When it says there shall be a rebuttable presumption of a violation of the order, et cetera, et cetera. What, what is that referring to? A rebuttable presumption?
That means that the person who receives whatever, a notice to appear, a ticket essentially, they're the ones that are going to have to demonstrate that there was no violation. In terms of the individual, let's call it the individual mandate, so to speak, to borrow a phrase, right now, according to the Illinois Department of Public Health rules and regulations, they apply only to the host. And the host can avoid a problem if he or she makes a reasonable effort to get compliance on his or her property. They go up to somebody and say, and they can demonstrate this, "You must wear a mask." And the individual says, "No, I'm not a masker. I won't wear a mask. I am perfectly healthy. I could. I don't have a medical condition. But I refuse to wear a mask because I don't believe in, let's say, the science." And the individual says, "Well, then I'd like you to leave." And the individual says, "No." What happens then? And that's in part why the Public Health Department, Champaign, Urbana Public Health Department, deviated from the state IDPH rule, emergency rule, to provide that, Public Health Department did, to provide that the masking enforcement of masking can be applied to individuals. So what happens in my hypothetical where the individual doesn't want to leave, wants to stay at the party? Now you have a trespass situation and IDPH certainly isn't going to be called out, but the police department will be to escort the individual off the property. And now that individual is facing a trespass violation, whether it's an ordinance violation, they'd probably charge it as an ordinance violation or a state trespass violation. I think this approach that IDPH has chosen and we all kicked around is a much lower risk, i.e., you know, you got to wear a mask, you know, you're at the party, you're at the gathering. You know, if you want to be part of this gathering for the sake, as all of you have said tonight at some point in the discussions, individual responsibility, uh, must be practiced. And of course, individual responsibility also means individual accountability for their action or inaction. So I think that's why that is provided and that ties into the rebuttable presumption as well.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I wasn't, I thought that that's what that meant, but I wasn't entirely sure and I wanted to make sure. So, you know, the, the onus is on the person who's been charged with this being in here to, if they're in fine for something, it's on them to go and, and fight it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, and then gatherings on, on public property, this order shall be deemed to apply to parties and gatherings that occur on public property unless, otherwise provided for by another emergency order, ordinance or law. Seems to be pretty broad and being able to be widely applied. And I'm concerned about this being misapplied, uh, to certain activities. Somebody brought this up earlier and we kind of mentioned that it wouldn't affect events regarding free speech, protests, et cetera. But certainly reads like it would. Um, and I'm wondering if we need to be more explicit about stating such in, in this because it's pretty, it seems pretty broad. I mean, listening to this, it sounds like it would, you know, apply to the market at the square because it's public gathering, a public property. Anyway, thoughts on that?
It probably would. The way it came up is whether the gathering could be prevented. And I said that would be by issuing this, i.e. there can be no gathering uh, because of COVID. Now we're getting into a prior restraint. You can put restrictions on gatherings that are, as long as they're reasonable, as long as they are not a prior restraint. And therefore, I think you could have a masking requirement at a free speech rally or protest, whatever you want to call it, gathering. Generically, a gathering of any kind, uh, free speech or not, because it does not minimize the free speech and the right to assemble. No more than public nudity. Yeah, well, that's my free speech and I'm going to show up and all 200 of us are going to show up that way. I think there's some opportunity. I think there's some right to regulate that. This is a public health concern, as you all recognize. It does not restrain free speech.
I'm, I'm not seeing where you're saying public property. This refers to private property.
It's in...
On F.
To F.
Yeah. This order...
On public property.
This order shall also be deemed to apply to parties or gatherings that occur on public property unless otherwise provided for by another emergency order, ordinance or law.
So if a large group of anti-maskers were to gather in front of the city building to express their, uh, their foreseen right to not wear masks, then we would fine all of them for participating in that. Is that what, is that what you're saying?
Theoretically, uh, theoretically, but more likely it would be an educational situation. And my guess is, uh, well, I don't, I can't guess. I don't know how each situation would play out. We can come up with any kind of hypothetical one wants to get around any order or ordinance or statute or law we want. I mean, again, there's only so much enforcement that can be done. There's only so much expectation that people are going to be responsible when they decide to gather.
Sure. I mean, I, I guess I just, I'm, I'm failing to see why we're able to be so restrictive in this scenario just because of the public health risk, but we're not in so many, so many others where we go out of our way to say, well, we're not going to be restrictive about this thing because of a free speech right that somebody has. We're saying now that, uh, public health overrides free speech.
Well, it possibly, uh, in fact, it does in the U.S. Supreme Court as so held. And I forget the site and the title of the case. You can't scream fire in a theater. That's speech. But we could regulate that. Why? Because it's a public health, a life safety, you know, death situation by screaming fire in a theater.
But isn't that based on a clear and present danger argument? I mean, I, I, does the pandemic...
72,000 people dead. You don't think that's a clear and present danger? Because I do.
Just, it's different than a fire in a theater. That's pretty immediate.
So, so this is immediate too. I mean, it's a pandemic. It spreads, it can spread like wildfire, not to mix metaphors there.
Just, I'm just asking, just posing the question so people understand what our reasoning is behind having this because, you know, it's not clear. You know, we don't illuminate these things when we're, when we're putting this out there. We're just, we're writing it and the language is in there and we're voting on it. And I want to bring some of these things out so that people can understand what our reasoning is. That's why I'm asking these questions, not, not because I don't think that the pandemic is of very high risk or of immediate risk. I just want people to understand.
And your questions are very illuminating. They're good. They're good questions.
I would assume, oh, so...
Go ahead, Julie.
Sorry. Forget it. I would assume, I mean, that would mean public property would refer to like people getting together at the park. Or also, right, that like, we're wanted to include gatherings like that that aren't just in some, some, but, and they're, yeah, not on...
Yeah. And interestingly, the park districts in both Champaign and Urbana have begun issuing event permits again. They hadn't done that for a long time, but they found that people were gathering anyway. So they wanted to have an idea of who was in the park, what they were doing, how many were going to be there and have some, some control over that. So they are issuing permits for use of the park. I don't know, and, and I think they're, well, they would have to comply with the 50, the 50-person gathering limit, but that's in the public parks. The, the parking lot aspect of this whole thing is there have been parties, more in Champaign than in Urbana, but, but, you know, things happened. There have been very large parties in parking lots associated with apartment buildings. And that's been a problem as well. We're talking hundreds of people in some of those. So. Bill?
Okay, so now I'm a little confused again. So we have this gatherings on public property in there and this order will apply to that, apparently. So they can only have 10 people plus, well, there's no residents there, so 10 people, but then the park district can have 50 people. I, I'm confused. What's, what's the rules for, if you rent a pavilion at the park, will it be 50 people or will this make it 10 people?
I think, I don't know because, you know, we can't impose our ordinance on size of gatherings to the park district. They're a, you know, an equal branch of local government. Uh, what we're trying to, you know, and our 10 limits are on private property. And this one relates to masking gatherings.
Oh, right. Okay, I was confusing those. Okay, sorry.
The Phase 4 guidelines apply to the park district gatherings, for example, which is a maximum of 50.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Mary Alice?
I, I just want to be clear so that the public understands that the 10-person limit is only residential. Section A, which is face coverings, reads, "When in any public place and when unable to main social distancing, face coverings shall be required as set forth in Section 5." So you would be fine in the farmer's market, for example, because we already require face coverings on, to get into the farmer's market. So... Um, so I, it, the, the number of 10 doesn't apply outdoors, I guess is what I'm saying, as long as you can maintain the five, the six-foot distance.
Is that, is that correct?
You have to, you have to be careful about outdoors. If you mean outdoors in a public place like the farmer's market.
Yes.
Um, that, that's not a residence, so, and that's not a residential party. Oh, that would, uh, the 10 would apply to a residential party now, especially as we've amended it, all residences, any kind of residence. And the outdoors, uh, would, we would revert back to the Phase Four requirement of no more than 50. And we are placing on top of that, as did the Illinois Department of Public Health, if I'm not mistaken, as well as the Public Health Department, a masking requirement. Well, those 50 would have to have a masking requirement. Um, I don't go out to public gatherings or where I know people are going to be, so I have not been to the farmer's market, but somebody told me that there's some limitation in how, in how many people are in the farmer's market at any given time. I may be wrong on that. And if it's less than 50, but there's still, obviously, we do have the masking requirement there.
Yeah, there's, there's no limit, but they're, because they fall under an essential business.
Okay.
There are many, many, um, guidelines in place that are, um, are enforced by the market staff and, and the compliance has been remarkable as far as the public goes. Any other comments?
Jared?
Jared?
So one, one other question, uh, where did the 10 people come from?
I think it's guarding somebody's home, isn't it?
Where did it come from? That was the, uh, number that we arrived at.
So that's...
With our community partners. That's a local...
That's our decision. That's not IDPH.
That's our local decision, yes.
Okay. Um, I don't know. I guess I would like to hear counsel's thoughts on, uh, the 10-person number. If people think that that's appropriate, if, uh, if it's too low, I would argue that it's too low. Uh, I've had more than 10 people at my house in recent memory, uh, outside of my backyard and staying socially distanced from each other, but there were more than 10 people there. And with my friend group, it'd be easy for me to do that, uh, do that again, even, even indoors, and it's a risk that, that we accept. And it seems like if we, uh, you know, do this and other people having relatives over, you know, like Sheree said, a wedding, you know, wedding reception or, you know, not everybody can afford to go to Blue Stem Hall and, and do something really awesome in a cool space like that. Some people have to use their private residences for gatherings, church services, you know, there's a, there's a number of things, even just, uh, you know, uh, community groups that are trying to get together can easily exceed 10 people. So I'm just a little concerned that 10's pretty darn restrictive, uh, pretty darn low. Uh, maybe like to see...
Yeah, but you have those people in your backyard and not everyone has, uh, the space, um, even, you know, and you have, I, I, I guess what I'm thinking about is, uh, multifamily units. Um, not necessarily everyone, um, has the space to have more than 10 people gathered in their home. Uh, if I'm just having something in my yard, I, I, um, I think that's different than people who, who don't really have the, um, have that choice. They don't have a yard, but they still want to visit maybe with family and friends and, you know, just to keep, keep it so that, um, which I, I think is, I think 10 is, is a good number. I think it used to be five before, uh, when, when it was the, the whole state, that, uh, under the whole, the thing. Um, I think 10 persons, because, you know, everyone doesn't have a three-bedroom apartment or, or a huge living room or huge fellowship space. And you do have people that, you know, won't be having Bible study and stuff like that in their living rooms. You want them to be safe and it, and 10, 10 people is, I think to have, to have more than you need to take it outside, but not everyone has that, that choice. So I, I, I think that's why it's a 10-person. You, you know, think about how many folks you could actually have in your living room socially distanced.
Mary Alice?
Um, I, so one of the, one of the concerns that, that I heard from the public and that we always have to think of as a government entity is that the rules have to apply everywhere. So there has to be some give and take. Um, so we just, we've just amended it to apply across the board to all of Urbana. And as Sheree said, we have a variety of spaces that people have access to that have in their residences. So I understand why 10 might seem arbitrary, um, but I think for the sake of consistency, I think it's a good number to start with. Even if you have four, a family of four plus 10, that's 14 people right there. Uh, so I'm fine with keeping it at 10 people.
And it's important to remember that the countries who beat this thing and who are back closer to normal, I'm not sure anyone will ever be back to what they used to be, imposed much more drastic measures nationwide. So, so this, this is a, pretty much a compromise here. But, but, um, we know how this is spread. It's person to person. It's aerosol. It's people eating, drinking unmasked and, and that's a fact. Julie, go ahead.
I was going to say the number 10 does seem to be something that, um, uh, organizations are, are looking at because I know that right now the IH, IHSA has made recommendations for, um, teams that are practicing for the fall, for example. That's how big their group workouts are supposed to be, 10 people, but still physically distanced. So I don't know where that comes from, but I've, I've heard it many places and I'm very comfortable with it as, as a number for this order.
You'll see it in classroom, some classroom sizes too. Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? Okay. So we have a motion by Dennis, um, and it was seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Oh.
That motion passes as amended. Um, and just to recap, we'll, um, ask the UI to put out an Illini alert to notify, um, students, faculty and staff. The basics of both of these emergency orders. We'll also put together an FAQ and I think we'll put that on the homepage of the, make it sticky on the homepage of the website. And we'll get, um, that also out to council members. You can share with your constituents and on your neighborhood list serves as well and post to social media.
I don't think it's actually an Illini alert we want. That's the emergency text thing. It's probably just there, when they do their COVID update.
Their mass emails.
Mass email, yeah, sorry.
There's a lot of those coming out.
I was going to weigh in on the same thing. It's not going to be an Illini alert because that's, that's controlled by federal law, Clary Act. They do those for specific purposes. Uh, so you'll get a, you know, you could probably get something that's campus-wide, but it's not going to be, uh, labeled Illini alert.
Yes. And, and, um, I'm, I'm sure they'll be willing to do that.
Um, I have a question though. Bring this real quick. Um, I, because I am, uh, lost, I, I know that not everyone in, in my ward watches the, um, the city council meetings or goes online and checks them out and all that stuff. Is there a more, uh, of a way, uh, I don't know, pay, you know, stapling something to the telephone poles or something like that, that the city itself could also, um, alert, uh, inform the public as to how this, the fact that this is in place, uh, with signs or something? I don't, I don't know. You know, almost like, like you do when you, when you're getting ready, like we've got signs up and down the streets here because they're repairing the streets. I don't know if there's, is there something that, that could be done? Are there any COVID funds that something like that could be done to alert, uh, every community, um, in the city too that, you know, these are, these are new emergency, emerg- emergency, um, ordinances for the entire city.
Well, and we, um, one way we can do it for multifamily and rental properties is through our rental registration list. So we know every owner, land, property owner or manager. Um, we could notify through that list. That would, that would include about two-thirds of the households in Urbana. Um, for the single-family homes, neighborhoods, yeah, there's some other, probably some other options we can do.
They can post them at the mailboxes or something like that. Um, yeah. Okay, that's one thing.
And we'll, and we'll count on council members to spread the word through however you, you know, communicate with your constituents as well.
And to the homeowners associations as well.
And if you have other ideas, just let me know. I mean, this will be an ongoing, an ongoing effort.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
I think the more people that know about it, the less we have to worry about anybody's, um, home being, you know, folks, police mainly showing up and saying, you're going to have to disperse if people know about it. I can, I know as I see it happening, I can try to, to tell people, but at the same time it is one of these...
We really, we really like, like it's been since the beginning. It, we have to depend on each other to, to, our peers to help, um, enforce this. We cannot depend on the police department to do this only. And, and, and we don't want to have to depend on it. It's, it's our community collectively working together to reduce the spread of this virus. And that means from the very beginning, it's the same message. It means staying apart and it's the hardest thing in the world. And the longer this goes on, the harder it becomes. And especially as we move into the winter months when we can't be outdoors. So this is, this is a make or break moment for us in a lot of ways. And because this is the first time we've had anywhere close to a full university population back here, it, it's very, very important. I mean, when you think about it, um, people left town in March, the schools closed down, the universities shut down, and this is our first actual real-life example of what, you know, business as usual might look like in this community. So there's a lot riding on every single person sacrificing something to make this thing work. And, and, um, that's the message we have to get out. And it's, you know, over the, over the past few months, we've, we've seen the, the use of masks, masks increase, at least in Champaign-Urbana. It's not necessarily the case when you get outside of town, but, but in the stores and the retail establishments, just, you know, there's been a much better compliance and it's been an education effort, um, which is what this is going to take as well. So I appreciate everyone's cooperation in this. And you can see why these, these last two emergency orders were the hardest, the hardest to figure out, to figure out how to write them and how to navigate through them. And, um, I appreciate all your, your input and thought. Jared?
I'm just making a motion to extend the meeting. I'm guessing fif- 15 minutes to, uh, 10:45. I don't know how long we need for that last discussion item.
That's probably a good start.
I'll second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts? Okay.
He was muted.
Oh, okay. Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes, so we're extended to 10:45. Uh, next item on the agenda, our appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. So I have two for tonight. The first is to appoint, um, Councilmember Julie Laut to the Traffic Commission. She's basically filling out, um, the, um, term, uh, the seat on the Traffic Commission that, uh, was held by Eric Jacobson. So this goes, this actually should, um, well, Eric's term ended June 30th, 2023, so we'll keep it at that, but. Actually, that goes through, um, it would go through May 1st of next year, which is when the new council member terms all start. So that should read for the term ending May 1st, 2020. 2021, sorry. And then the reappointment is to the Arts and Culture Commission, and that's for June 30th, uh, 2023, ending with Stacy Robinson. Is there a motion? Mary Alice?
I'll make a motion that we accept the appointment and the reappointment.
Is there a second? Bill Colbrook? Okay, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Any discussion? Was that a hand up somewhere? Okay. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
I think I should abstain.
Okay. Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And last item on the agenda is a discussion item related to extending the governor's moratorium and also, um, an update on what housing assistance, um, programs are available in re- in response to COVID-19. Um, the governor's office did extend the statewide eviction on moratoriums, uh, which was set to expire on August 22nd. So that's been extended for one more month. It seems to be going on a month by month basis at this point, but, but our, uh, I was notified of that on Friday. I have asked, um, Jim Simon to begin research on what the options are locally, and he's, he does have some information there. And then we'll start with Sheila Dodd. She's, can give an update on, um, the, uh, housing assistance and that sort of thing, uh, that's currently available for people in, as they're, as we're looking at how we can help folks, um, facing, uh, evictions.
Well, good evening. The shelters, homeless shelters, the county, Cunningham and Champaign townships, along with United Way, City of Urbana and Champaign, we all meet regularly regarding shelter, homeless and housing issues. There are currently about 50 potential evictions pending in the Champaign County court system. With the governor's moratorium on evictions, they won't move forward until it is lifted, which is currently set to expire on September 22nd. At this time, the community impact of evictions is unknown. Outreach is being made to the local landlords to get an estimate on the number, number of potential eviction cases. There is currently $375,000 available countywide for rent assistance. The Home Consortium, which is comprised of the City of Urbana, City of Champaign and Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, will be providing an additional $175,000 for COVID-impacted families. And an emergency solutions grant will fund an additional $700,000 throughout the community for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing programs. The county administers a rent assistance program. The county administers a rent assistance program that has funded eighty-six hot households through the end of the July, and they provide rent as well as utility assistance. They are currently working through applications of an additional hundred and twenty-six people to determine what assistance is needed. The program offers assistance to anyone in the county, which includes Urbana residents. The City of Urbana has received requests from thirty families for assistance with its CDVG COVID funding, and fourteen of those have received rent assistance. Five were denied as they did not live in the city or were behind on their rent prior to COVID. The other applications are still providing information. If necessary, additional funds may be allocated to the program if the demand exceeds the COVID funding. Funds set aside for housing rehabilitation programs may be utilized for the additional rent funds. Due to COVID and social distancing, these programs are limited to emergency assistance only. The City of Urbana is working with the Cunningham Township and the CU Men's Shelter to administer an emergency solutions grant through the COVID funds through the state of Illinois. Once the funding agreement is received, staff will bring the program to the city council for review and recommendation. The total for that program will be, bring a hundred and seventy-five thousand for housing and shelter assistance. Both Cunningham and Champaign townships offer rent assistance for emergency needs. The housing and shelter groups continue to meet and do outreach to funders and social service agencies to share resources, program guidelines and information.
Thanks, Sheila. Any questions for Sheila? Jared? And then Mary Alice.
Sheila, is that fifty number just what's currently pending, but doesn't include filings that are not processed yet?
Right. It is exactly what's, what's in the court pending. And we don't have, we don't know. We've talked to a couple of judges. We don't know what's pending. So we're going to reach out to the landlords to see if we can get any input from them.
Cause Danielle had mentioned at the last town board meeting that she knew of one landlord who is, uh, said that they were, had sixty that they had filed. Uh, they may not all be pending, but I was just curious if it was, if we knew or had an idea of the pending, because that's the real tell of what's coming. It's already in court, which we know.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary Alice, do you have a question?
I did. I, Sheila, I'm wondering if you have kind of a total amount of assistance that's available within our entire community that includes Urbana?
Between the programs that currently exist, there's a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. And that does not include the Illinois Housing Development Authority funding that you heard about earlier in, in this discussion. That is a lottery, but a lot of Urbana residents, well, all of this team is referring people to that program first because it offers a much larger pot. It'll give five thousand dollars, um, to the landlord to pay arrears and future, uh, rent. Where the rest of our pots of money are a little smaller.
All right. Thank you. Jared? Jared?
Sheila, how much of that seven hundred thousand dollar pool is, uh, well, let's, I want to say unrestricted, but less restricted. Uh, I know there's often quite a bit of requirements that people have to meet in order to gain access to that. It's not like anybody can just, uh, show up and ask for it and they'll, and they'll give it to them. You know, they've got to meet requirements. How much of that is, you know, low requirements or has a higher requirement? Do we have a breakdown of that?
It's all state and federal funding, and so you have to meet certain thresholds. The two main ones are you have to have an impact because of COVID. So you have to have been current on your rent and then, um, maybe you lost your job at Christie Clinic and now you're not able to pay your rent. That person may be eligible for, uh, up to three months assistance through our program. Or the emergency solutions grant, they're still writing the guidelines on that, but they have said what our allocation is. And so that usually is the group that Danielle's most concerned about, that kind of lowest of the low. And that will help with rapid rehousing, people who are homeless, um, for fourteen days to help them get back into housing.
Okay. So that one will be more accessible. How large is that pool?
It's a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Danielle, uh, the Cunningham township is going to get about a hundred and twenty. The CU Men's Shelter is going to get forty thousand. And then, um, my staff is going to administer the program, and so we'll be getting a small amount of admin funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie.
So is it correct now that both the men's shelter and Austin's Place for Women is open year round? But we still don't have emergency shelter for, um, families with children?
That's true.
And then I guess, since I'm here, um, I wondered if there was any update about issues of utilities shut offs? And what, if Jim is looking to that, what we could as a city do or, um, like what? Because I think that's going to be a big issue, even if you're in your house, but you don't have heat in the middle of the winter, it's going to be.
Right. Um, the programs that the, both Champaign and Urbana are administering, we do offer utility assistance. And so some of the fourteen applications that I've processed and paid, some of them were behind on their utilities. And so we brought them current on, um, their power bill and their water bill. But the county has a large pot of money that they got that can be used for utility assistance. And it's a lot more flexible than ours. And so, um, we're referring people to them first because, you know, obviously they've got a lot more. And if it's an easier access, it can help people quicker, then that's what we want to do. That's why it's important, like Diane was mentioning earlier, the, the community members are all meeting to try to get the biggest bang for our buck and to stretch our resources, but yet also be consistent in our programming and our messaging.
It's been, okay. Dennis?
Could you, uh, tell us again what the, uh, extension will go to as far as the date?
The governor extended to September twenty-second.
So it's, okay, it's a little bit about, it's next month. One extra month. We're going to go month by month. We, we're not going to do anything farther than that locally. Is that correct?
Maybe this is a good time for Jim to jump in to, to share, um, kind of a summary of what he's learned so far as far as what you can do on an eviction moratorium locally and at the state level.
Good idea.
I will say no decision, at least I haven't, I have not been directed at this point to draft an eviction moratorium emergency order yet. Uh, let's start with the governor. Actually Diane, I wasn't clear on that when we spoke earlier. The governor's order, well, let me break it down. There are two issues here. One is filing evictions, and then two, there is evicting tenants for non-payment of rent. The governor's order does not prevent, um, right now, uh, you can't file new eviction proceedings through, as Sheila said, September twenty-two. What the governor's order does, it's an extension of the original order that was adopted that included the, you know, the shelter in place. And it simply says that, uh, local law enforcement officers in the state of Illinois, state, county and local, are instructed to cease enforcement of orders of eviction for residential premises for the duration of the gubernatorial disaster proclamation. And that has what's been extended, uh, this, we're now in the second extension. We can, if, if directed, or if you all wish, or Diane directs, we, we can draft an eviction moratorium, as it's come to be known, ordinance or executive order. Better be an executive order because then it's a temporary situation. It would apply to, uh, much like Sheila indicated, to those who have been and can demonstrate that they've been affected by COVID nineteen. It would likely not apply to individuals that were behind in their rent prior to, uh, the lockdown, uh, when people started losing their jobs. It can be like Chicago's fairly complex. What they have, first of all, it doesn't relieve tenants of the obligation of paying rent. And it's not applicable to tenants who have violated their lease in some other way, other than the non-payment of rent. It's how Chicago operates, and that's how the governor's, uh, uh, executive order operates. What typically happens with Chicago is the landlord gives a five day notice. That's typical under eviction proceedings. It's a statutory requirement in the eviction statute. And then a tenant can advise that, uh, he or she has suffered and is unable to pay rent or hasn't been able to pay rent because of COVID nineteen. That extends the process by, uh, seven days. They call that a cooling off period. In which case, an effort is supposed to be made between the tenant and the landlord to come up with a plan. Keep the tenant in their residence and provide assurance at some point in time, the landlord will eventually get rent. Or they can agree to apply the security deposit and any interest earned on the security deposit, uh, to at least pay down the rent. If they agree, the landlord cannot proceed with the eviction. If the landlord doesn't negotiate in good faith, the landlord can't proceed with, cannot proceed with eviction. At, at some point though, the landlord would have to start over by filing a new five day notice and the seven day cooling off period with efforts to negotiate. And there's a mediation provision in there. And in the case of Chicago, they have retained, the court system has retained either the city or the court system, I'm not sure which, I think it's actually the city, a firm that specializes in mediation of landlord tenant issues, and they try to resolve that.
Excuse me, Jim. Um, we had extended this meeting to ten forty-five and we're two minutes out from that. Do you want to extend to eleven?
Do I?
No, I'm asking the council.
I'll make a motion to extend to eleven.
I'll second that.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Ms. Laut.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Okay. So we're extended till eleven PM, so we have fifteen total minutes.
So real quickly to kind of wrap up, uh, their ordinance provides examples of what can be done in terms of reaching agreement. I, I may have misspoke, I can't remember, but if the landlord does not reach agreement with the tenant, the landlord can proceed, but the landlord bears the burden of demonstrating that reasonable efforts by the landlord to reach agreement, uh, were proposed and that the tenant rejected them. So that's, that's basically what Chicago does. Doesn't waive rent. It just simply puts steps in place. Uh, and hopefully the goal is the parties resolve through negotiation. There's an arbitration provision and a mediation provision.
Does it extend, uh, I mean, is it possible to make a two month extension rather than a single month as the governor is going to be doing?
If we want to do that, I think we could do that.
I'll just go across my screen. I'm seeing hands up. Um, start with Sharice, then we'll do Julie and then Jared.
I was just wanting to say that the, uh, I was looking at the executive order and it extends to the nineteenth of September.
And that's what I thought too.
Yeah, the reissue extends to the nineteenth, not to the twentieth.
Okay.
I, I mean, given that, as we were talking about earlier, how fast these things are happening and how, um, we want to try to get public input and, and discussion on these as much as possible. If other people on the council are supportive, I would like, you know, to ask Jim to go forward with writing something up so that we would have something to discuss. I think, um, that we need to be ready to act if the governor chooses not to extend the, uh, his, his current order.
I'm certainly willing to do that if that's what you all want and that's what Diane wants me to do. I'm all, Diane and I have talked about it, and unless you've changed your mind, Diane, I think you were very interested in ordinance or an emergency order as well.
Just to have one on hand. Jared, you have a comment?
Yeah, uh, Jim, just following, uh, what you were saying about Chicago, uh, just to the raw point. We do, it sounds like we do have the authority to do something about it under our home rule authority, uh, to, to write this. I mean, I guess that's the basic question is can we do it?
Yes, we can't prevent eviction proceedings from being filed. We can, uh, provide steps that must be taken, uh, that require the landlord to negotiate in good faith to try to resolve, some way of resolving. Uh, the other thing we probably could do for a reasonable period of time is just like, uh, the governor's order that in eviction proceedings can't, or evictions can't be undertaken. There's a little bit of difficulty with that. I don't know about down here because I've never been involved with an eviction. I know up north, when an eviction order is entered, the eviction, the landlord takes the eviction order to the county sheriff. And it is the county sheriff that, uh, institutes, uh, the, carries out the eviction. I'm not sure we can tell the county sheriff what he can or cannot do.
Sure. Um, yeah.
That issues the eviction order.
Sheriff carries out the order.
What?
Sheriff carries out the order.
That's what I figured. I suspect that's the way it is across the state and all. But we can require certain steps to try to get a resolution of this thing before it goes to an actual eviction.
Understood. Uh, what about, um, are the same principle in applying to, uh, utility shut offs? What, what, what about in that, in that case?
I have not researched utility shut offs. My assumption, and it's just a logical assumption, not based on experience or having done research, would, we could probably provide something similar. I don't think Amron as a private company is any different than a landlord that's a private.
Okay.
But I guess I'd have to research that.
I, I just really want to stress that I feel like it is, uh, imperative that those two things are tied together, uh, that we don't consider one without the other, uh, because what's the good of being in your home in the winter if you can't heat it? Or you can't pay your electric because the pandemic's still ongoing and people are unable to find work and so on and so forth. So I would highly recommend that we consider looking at both of those in, in, uh, at the same time.
We can do it.
Any other questions?
I have one more question for Sheila, unless somebody else wanted to go. Not seen anybody's hands raised. Uh, Sheila, what portion of our, uh, funding was coming through the RPC? Through the, uh, through this CSBG? Because I was, uh, somebody had brought that up to me the other day, and I believe that they're not, uh, accepting applications right now, but they're planning to about the time that the, uh, they're processing some, but they're not accepting them now. And they're planning to restart probably about the same time or just before the current eviction moratorium expires, unless the governor renews it. the current eviction moratorium expires, unless the governor renews it. Sheila might not be paying attention.
She might be still muted.
She's still in the call.
She's still here. Let me find her.
I'm getting there. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
The county gets their own pot of COVID money through Community Services Block Grant, which is very similar to CDVG, but it's different. They had over two hundred applications in July, and so they kind of have a week or ten-day hold on taking new ones till they can get processed through those. None of our funding is going to that program. Our funding is being administered through us right now, through, through Alyssa and I.
So, so none of that seven hundred thousand pool is in that? It's in that?
Yes. Yes. The, the county is getting part of that seven hundred thousand dollars. That was a collective amount through what the City of Champaign, the county CSBG, the City of Urbana, all of those different pots of money, emergency solutions grants, all of that money together is a little over seven hundred thousand.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or Sheila? Or Jim? Julie?
Oh, I guess it's not a question, just another thought. My brain might be a bit fried after four hours of trying to listen. But just thinking about maybe us going ahead and acting on something as a city so that we're not waiting to see what the governor does, if that makes sense. And we have, we know things aren't really going to change or improve that much, and people's bills just get bigger over the winter. And so, I don't know. I just wanted to put that out there, that I think the going month to month seems to add a lot of uncertainty and, and stress to people who are probably already very stressed regarding where they might be living in a few weeks down the line.
Any other comments? Okay. We'll go ahead and at least have something drafted and ready to bring back for consideration. Obviously, the goal is to keep people in housing, keep them where they are, if we possibly can, to get through the worst of this. And in the meantime, all work together to prevent spread of this disease in the community and keep us, keep us healthy. So we'll keep you updated on where we are with all that and expect something as soon as we can. Okay. With any other questions at this point? Okay. Then we will adjourn this meeting, and the next meeting is September eighth. Next Monday is the fifth Monday.